Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our November 23, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business is to stand and join me for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the approval of the agenda.
Second. Got a first and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Our first item on the list today is County Ditch 52 Improvement Hearing. Welcome, everyone, for being here today.
Hey, Craig.
The final hearing for the improvement of County Ditch 52. We'll have Craig Austinson read the jurisdictional documents at this time for the hearing.
Hearing notices were mailed on October 22, 2021. Landowner information meeting was held on November 9, 2021. Notice was posted of this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse, located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. Part of this, assuming that it will be approved, would be, we'll have a resolution to financing also at the end of the meeting. And next thing I get to do is read the DNR report into the record.
Okay.
To Craig Austinson, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority. This is regarding the Final Engineers Report for Proposed Improvement of Blue Earth County Ditch 52. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, thank you for the opportunity to review the proposed improvement of Blue Earth County Ditch 52. We offer comments in accordance with Minnesota Statute 103E on behalf of the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Please read this letter at the hearing and include it in the hearing record. Project summary in contact. This project proposes to replace the tiled drainage network in 1,192-acre Blue Earth County ditch number 52 watershed with a larger, deeper, and steeper tile network. The proposed project would roughly double the drainage coefficient of the tile system with from the outlet drainage coefficient of .26 inches a day to .5 inches per day. The FER presents three options: one, improvement; two, improvement with a six-acre storage basin; and three, improvement with a half-acre storage basin. Final Engineers Report notes that the option two is no longer under consideration because the basin's location is in an already-established easement, making it ineligible for state funding. The estimated project cost is $1.9 million, which averages to about $1,600 per acre. The preliminary engineering reports estimates $1.4 million in separable maintenance. The project outlets into Rice Creek of public water and then into the Maple River and the La Sourd River, and hence is part of the La Sourd River major watershed. The Maple and the La Sourd Rivers experience frequent prolonged flooding. Altered hydrology has been identified by the MPCA as the most common stressor throughout the watershed and is primary driver for degraded water quality conditions in the La Sourd River watershed, which are some of the worst in the state. Summary of the DNR comments on the preliminary engineers' report. The DNR provided context, concerns, and questions to the Drainage Authority, who is legally obligated to ensure that the requirement of 103 are met before approving a project. Concerns relayed by the preliminary engineers' report advisory letter persist and include: The project will negatively impact Rice Creek in the La Sourd watershed, particularly in the context of cumulative impacts to altered hydrology from multiple drainage improvement projects. Water storage, or the lack thereof, is the linchpin that prevents or accelerates when lacking flooding, excessive erosion, and degraded water quality in habitats. The proposed storage basin was a step in the right direction, but undersized to sufficiently mitigate the project's impacts to altered hydrology. The project does not incorporate sufficient strategies from the Blue Earth County Water Plant and will negate efforts to reduce total peak flows as is called for the La Sourd Raps report. The CD 52 watershed topography naturally created a wetland hundreds of acres in size. Topography makes drainage difficult as the landscape naturally tries to store water here. This watershed is ideal to restore wetlands, store water, and meet multipurpose drainage practice objectives. Final engineers' review and assessment. In addition to the concerns relayed to the DNR preliminary engineer's advisory letter, we offer or necessitate the following based on the review of the final engineers' report. While the six-acre storage basin will offer minimal mitigation, the final engineers' reports that the landowners no longer wish to pursue this option because the proposed location is not eligible for state funding, rather, a half-acre basin is being proposed. The basin is incapable of mitigating the project's impacts. We again encourage a large upstream wetland restoration. The updated model information, which now includes discharge volumes, illustrates the degree in which this project will alter hydrology within County Ditch 52 watershed. And they have a table attached here. The total water discharge volume increases 23% to 43% are substantial. The annual discharge of the La Sourd River has already doubled over the last several decades, causing widespread bank erosion and habitat degradation. This project, along with a multitude of other recent drainage improvement projects in the watershed, will certainly increase the annual discharge further. We note that the modeling results in the option three, the half-acre storage ponds, do not seem feasible. For instance, the addition of a half-acre storage pond reduces the volume discharge from the 153-acre feet to 128-acre feet for the 25-year storm event, representing a one-and-a-half-acre foot worth of storage, holding 24-acre feet of water. Per 103E.34, the Drainage Authority must dismiss the proposed drainage project if it determines that the project is not practicable after considering the environmental land use and multipurpose water management criteria in Section 103E.015, Division 1, based on the persistent concerns as relayed by the preliminary engineers' report advisory letter, as well as the documented increases to discharge volumes and the resulting impacts can be expected from this. We do not believe this project is practicable under these considerations. In 103E.341, the project must be dismissed if the benefits of the proposed drainage project are less than the total cost. We requested a copy of the viewer's report to better determine these factors. We have not yet received it. We would like to note that the public cost of downstream flooding and degraded environmental conditions is not factored into the cost-benefit analysis. The project would effectively negate public investment in improving environmental conditions within the La Sourd River watershed. This project must submit a public water work permit application for the riprap work at the outlet, although this process, the project, will be asked to modify the currently proposed perpendicular discharge to minimize erosion risk. Contact the area hydrologist, Dan Geralamo, with questions. Conclusion: The La Sourd River watershed is already burdened by excess water without effective mitigation. This project will contribute to higher annual discharge, accelerated erosion and sedimentation, habitat degradation, and water quality impacts. This project is just one of several drainage improvement projects that have occurred or is planned to occur within the La Sourd River watershed. The cumulative impacts of this and other similar projects should not be ignored. We encourage the Drainage Authority and the project proposers to implement projects and management practices that work to mitigate altered hydrology and water quality impacts within watershed. Soil health practices and other BMPs could be used to store and evapotranspirate water from the landscape while also supporting sustainable farmland and healthy watersheds. Cover crops, crop rotations, and residue management could increase soil organic matter in soil water and nutrient-holding capacity. Restoring drained and farmed wetlands would add storage, evapotranspiration, and habitat in this area. All of these practices would help mitigate heavy rainfalls and help infiltrate and evapotranspirate water. Please send the response to this letter and/or revised FER, the viewer's report, meeting minutes, findings of fact, and any order issued by the Drainage Authority regarding the proposed improvement to the DNR when they become available. Please submit these documents or have any other questions about this letter to regional drainage email staff. In accordance with 103E.301, we offer that the engineers' work on the final engineers' reports appears sufficient other than option three modeling results. Let's see point three. Two, the proposed establishment will improve drainage for the properties in the project area three. As currently proposed, we do not believe the proposed project is practicable after considering the environmental land use and multipurpose drainage management criteria in Section 103E.015, subdivision one. The drainage improvement does not provide public health benefits to landowners and communities located downstream of the outlet. Five, a soil survey is not necessary. Sincerely, Todd Colander, DNR Ecological Water Resources Division, Southern Minnesota South District Management. And that's it for the jurisdiction documents. ISG has a response, but I'll let Chuck to the PER, but I'll let Chuck discuss that.
All right. Thank you, Craig. At this time, we'll now hear from Chuck Brandl from ISG with the results of the detailed survey report, and I'll let you introduce your staff. Chuck.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
Chuck with ISG, Jen Whitmer with me, and she's going to give most of the presentation. Again, we're here to present the final engineers' report for CD 52. Are you... Oh, it's up there. Yep.
Which one do you want? I can change all of them.
That's perfect. Want to make sure people can see it. In the process, the improvement process has a long, detailed process through the statute. The final engineers' report goals are to develop and obtain feedback of landowners. We had a meeting two weeks ago. We do have a number of landowners here. Ensure the project is feasible, practicable, cost-effective, and necessary for public benefit. And then we have the viewer's report, which will also be presented. One, we do have a response to the DNR comments below. One thing I do want to note is that I have been asking for routine meetings with DNR staff and have not been, we've not been able to have those. And Craig is well aware of that for about the last year. So I'm continuing to do that and will continue to do that. Hopefully, we can get some traction on those. I'll let Jen go through the project and existing conditions.
Okay. So CD 52 lies within Sterling Township. It provides drainage for a little under 1,200 acres. There's about 72 feet of fall within the total watershed, which means the system's pretty flat. And it's mostly in agricultural production. The system was established in 1917. There were repairs done in 2002 to replace about 1,000 feet of tile and to replace the outlet. There have been no improvements on the system since it was originally constructed. Here's the existing watershed. The red line indicates the watershed boundary. You can see a yellow line that crosses through the system. That is an abandoned ammonia gas line, which we've located and included in our proposed design to make sure we cross that responsibly. And then the black dashed lines are all the existing public tile lines. And the outlet is currently 28-inch, which gives it a .26 inch-per-day drainage coefficient, which is about half of what we currently designed the projects to be. So it is undersized. We flew the drone last fall, so you can see areas with standing water, drowned-out spots. We also televised the system in spring 2019. Most of it was on the main line. When we televised, we found intrusions, offset joints, cracks in the pipe, and obstructions. So the existing, or the as-designed capacity is .26, but with all of these obstructions and offsets, it's lower than that.
We did do a feasibility study before the petition was filed, reviewed this with landowners, and played some of this video, so the landowners were aware of what the condition of the tile was before they petitioned the project.
So now the proposed design. We designed for a minimum five feet of cover. The project includes water quality intakes at road crossings and a wetland enhancement. We designed for a half-inch-per-day drainage coefficient, and we did a hydraulic model to ensure that the outlet was adequate. Here's the southern portion of the proposed watershed. The green line indicates the proposed tile system. So we are proposing a 36-inch tile outlet. There is a half-acre storage area on the southern end. That'll just catch overland flow to help mitigate downstream impacts. And we are crossing the gas line in one location. Here's the northern portion of the proposed watershed. A couple of notes: We're proposing to include lateral D, which is currently a private tile that will be incorporated into the system so that this property has access to drainage. Branch six, we are proposing to end at Highway 30 so that we don't have an extra road crossing. And then in order to drain north of Highway 30, we're proposing branch eight to drain that road ditch. Like I said, we're increasing the tile size from 28-inch to a 36-inch for a half-inch-per-day drainage coefficient. There are portions of the system that have above a half-inch drainage coefficient. That's mostly due to limited tile size availability, and we need to match the slope of the ground so that we're not 10 to 15 feet deep in locations. But all of that will be restricted at the outlet, so the total drainage coefficient is half-inch per day. We have a couple of plan sheets. We went over these with the landowners during the informational meeting two weeks ago. In the PER phase, there was a six-acre wetland restoration that we recommended. Unfortunately, the landowners rescinded their support for this, so it's no longer feasible.
Jen and I and staff went out, met with the landowners, went over the project, and they felt they didn't want it on the front campus.
So here is the proposed half-acre storage area. It's right before the watershed drains into Rice Creek. So the tile won't drain into this storage area. It'll just collect overland flow to temporarily detain it, and then it'll have a tile outlet, or it'll have an intake so that it can drain back into the tile.
And you'll see when we go over costs, we're essentially maximizing the amount of storage we can get with the amount of benefits that are there. We're trying to get as most, as much storage as we can within the boundaries of the cost-benefit.
Once we construct the proposed tile, the existing system will be abandoned. We'll connect into it periodically to make sure that all landowners that currently drain into the existing tile will have drainage. But the existing tile system will stay in the ground, so we don't need to worry about disposal of it. And in many places, it'll act as a private header for landowners. We did a hydraulic model on the system to review downstream impacts and dis- We did a hydraulic model on the system to review downstream impacts and to see how, make sure we weren't, or how we were affecting flooding throughout the system between the existing and proposed designs. So, option one, this is no storage, so we increased peak flows to 43%, down to 5% at the tile outlet. We also reviewed flows downstream in the creek, and those impacts are negligible for the creek, just because there's such a large watershed going, draining to that point that the 2,000 acres that are within this watershed are, or 1,000 acres, it doesn't have much of an impact. Option three is with the half-acre storage. So, for the two-year, we increased flows to 38%, but everything else is reduced because we're reducing overland flow at the outlet. And then, again, negligible impacts downstream. Here are the modeling results. So, this is for a four-and-a-half-inch or 10-year rainfall event. So, for the existing system, you can see a couple of areas of red and yellow and orange. Yellow would be crop stress. Orange and red are most likely crop loss due to flooding. So, a couple of areas are saved. This is the proposed option three. And then for 6.6-inch rainfall event, which is 50-year, there's some large pockets of crop loss throughout the existing system, and there'll be some crop stress on the proposed, but hopefully, it'll drain fast enough that you won't lose your entire crop. We went over construction practices with the landowners during the meeting two weeks ago. So, now project costs. Since we reviewed the existing system, we did the televising. We know that the existing system isn't in great condition, so we are applying separable maintenance, which is the cost to repair the entire system. So, for project, or for option one, separable maintenance is $1.4 million. So, like I said, that's the cost to repair the entire system. The improvement cost is $1.8 million, and so net cost is $486,000. We have...
Viewer benefits.
Viewer, oh, sorry. Viewer benefits is $430,000, so the net benefit is $44,000. Oh, that's...
We got that backwards.
That's not right. Okay. Net cost is $386,000, sorry. But we do have $44,000 with benefits. Option three, all of the separable maintenance is the same. Improvement cost is the same, but with a $37,000 for the storage. So, for with this option, total improvement cost is $1.87 million, and the net benefit is $6,000. So, benefits are close, but it is still economically feasible. We've seen, due to supply shortages, a large increase in pipe prices since the start of the year. We've discussed this with landowners. Pipe prices were high when we did the PER, so there hasn't been a really big change. Prices have gone up since the feasibility, but...
We are hoping that early next year, prices do drop. I've been talking to contractors and suppliers. At this point, you know, we don't know, so we're using what is currently on the books for today.
And then reviewing the original plans, we are not applying road authority costs for the system because all of the roads were there when the original system was constructed.
So, we shouldn't have an issue with MND. We'll need a permit for MND, but assessing them, not assessing it for boring, we're eliminating across it.
Right. We did a multipurpose drainage management plan to show possible conservation practices. Here's...
Down on the map.
Yeah. Here's the map. So, there are contour buffer strips included, areas with bioreactors, potential wetland enhancements.
We did go over two large wetland enhancements or projects with landowners. One being shown on the screen, the other one that was discussed in option two.
Yeah.
Landowners did not want to move forward with those.
Right. So, this 80-acre wetland bank was discussed with landowners, but was shot down in the feasibility phase. Here's the southern portion, large areas of controlled drainage, and then potential wetlands again. So, Craig went over the DNR comments.
So, a few responses to the DNR comments. There was a comment about the wetland project not having state funding available. We were not counting on state funding. We were counting on that as a project cost, but the landowners did not want to do that. They already have an easement, so we wouldn't need, we would, we wouldn't need their approval to do that wetland project because they already have an existing easement, and they elected not to do that. There were a few other comments on modeling and the modeling issues. We feel that if we move forward with option three, we're maximizing the amount of storage we can get within the cost-benefit ratio and reducing peak flows for the events that are required to be reviewed under Minnesota Drainage Statute, which are the five, 10, 25-year, and 50-year events. So, we do feel we meet the requirements of the statute, both from a cost standpoint and the environmental criteria, looking at the condition of the outlet and the capacity downstream. There was also a comment about a permit for riprap. The riprap outlet that is in place was constructed about 15, 16 years ago. I was down there when it was constructed. We will try to utilize that to not need a permit, but if we, if we cannot, I will work with DNR staff to get a permit for the outlet.
And we did provide our model to them.
Yes.
Environmental criteria, we can go over those if you want, but they were included in that full FER report. In conclusion, we recommend option three as it is economically feasible and it mitigates peak flows at the outlet. The project as presented is cost-effective, practical, and feasible, and its necessity has been presented. The project will be a public benefit and contribute to the public welfare of the area, and therefore, the project should be considered for final approval as described in the final engineers' report and as presented today.
Summary of our report.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck and Jen. At this time, is there any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you for that report. We will be opening it up for public comment in a short time here, but at this time, we will move down to Dan Ruby will present the viewers' report.
Here we're at the final hearing for the Blue Earth County CD 52. Here's a listing of the appointed viewers. My name is Dan Ruby. I graduated from MSU. I was a farmer, and I'm currently a wetland banker. Bill Anderson and Lance Roberts are also here. Brian Reinquist is a certified appraiser. He has 35-plus years of experience in drainage and engineering. This report covers the redetermination and improvement for a previously constructed drainage system. It is a comparison of the conditions prior to artificial drainage with those that should exist with the drainage system in a reasonable state of repair. The viewing process is a mass appraisal process that values a universe of properties as of a given date using a standard methodology, employing common data, and allowing for statistical testing. Here's a list of our, the aids that we use in viewing. USDA Soil Survey, GIS Photos, Minnesota LiDAR. We use a digital elevation model. We use yield averages of production costs from the Minnesota State College and University Farm Management Records. We use sales data from Blue Earth County Assessor's Office, and we visually inspect each 40-acre tract. Here's a summary of CD 52. Originally constructed in 1917, there's one known repair designed by ISG in 2002. It's telling 4, 743 feet of mainline tile. It was completed south of 105th Street in section 33 in Sterling Township. Benefited acres is around 1,101 acres. There's 32,170 feet of tile. There's no ditch. Therefore, there will be no buffer. Provides outlet to Blue Earth County in Sterling Township. Outlets into a natural meander we now know as Rice Creek. Here's an image of our watershed. I like to do a little history of before and after drainage. Here's how the initial drainage happened. They would hook upwards of 30 bulls and a steel plate, and they would scrape the bottom of the ditches, the waterways. These ditches were built for anticipated needs by real strong men. Built for farming practices in early 1900s. That big machine is floating. Here's what we do today. We go out there and we tile, make everything farmable. Farmers want to be able to farm at night. They want to, they would, they don't really want to ever get stuck. Farming then and now. Back in the 1800s, this is how they plowed. This is how they harvested their crop. Drainage was designed for hay and pasture. No one ever presumed that we would have the equipment that we have today. This is a four-year, four-row planer, and here's a more modern planer. Here's how it was combined. I believe there's 10 men that I counted on that picture working together. Here's how we farm today. How big was the field? How many tenders did they have to have? How many, how many semis did they have to have to make that possible? We use historical air photos. This is just one. This is the earliest we have from 1938 where we can have a good look of what it was before. This is an example of a watershed. Example of a soil survey, contours maps, and digital elevation model. In the field, we have all these layers intertwined so that when we go down and look at your 40 or your 20 acres, we can see all the, all your details through, through the image. Benefits and damages. Summarize benefits is if you benefit, it's, you need to pay something. If you're damaged, you'll receive something from the system. Benefit classifications based on conditions before drainage. A, open water and cattail. The Bs were seasonally flooded, hay and pasture. The Cs, they just typically need drainage. The D typically do not need drainage. The non-benefited, we leave that category mainly for trees, conservation areas, wetland areas, and native non-converted. And our other column is mainly for roads. Additional benefit classes, the A- is for drain, non-productive, pasture, rim projects, wetland restorations. The D- column is for commercial facilities such as livestock or storage. Valuation prior to drainage. Standing water and cattails had zero market value, zero economic productivity. The B lands were market value of 1,000 to 2,000, economic productivity of 100. C, the wet subsoil marginal cropland, market value was 4,500 to 6,000, and economic productivity of 637.50. And the Ds, uplands, market value of 6,000 to 7,000 with an economic productivity of $712. Now, when we go to the next slide, just look at the numbers for A. Market value of zero, and we go all the way, we're saying now that once they're drained, the A ground is between $6,000 and $7,000 with economic productivity of $690. The B ground, the well-drained ground, high class, market value from $7,000 to $8,000, $720 an acre. The C ground, the well-drained ground, the best class, is market value of $8,000 to $9,000 with economic productivity of $750. The D ground, the well-drained ground, high land class with improved farmability from $8,000 to $9,000 with economic productivity of $750. When we look at the income approach, we look at a two-year rotation of corn and soybeans. So, the adjusted income for a two-year rotation is $750, and the two-year rotation of corn and soybeans expenses would be $341.96. When you calculate all that out, the benefit value for A is $5,140 an acre. The B is $3,990 an acre. The C land is $1,880, and the D is $620. Efficiency. Efficiency represents what the tiles, how good the tile system was working before, as it stands, how does it work compared to the efficiency that we would like? The net benefit is reduced when actual conditions do not meet NRCF's hydrologic efficiency standards. This tile system does not meet the NRCF standard. Proximity is, let's just go to the, proximity is used to adjust benefits to allow owners not directly on the system a reduction for the cost of tile or connection to the system. This is done by distance and joint cost for connection. So, in this example, this is in JD 15, this is the ditch. For this particular quarter-quarter, they get 100% proximity. As they go away from the ditch, this one would be at 85, 70, and as you go out, they, their benefits reduce so that they have money left on the table for them to pay for their own tile to get their water to the system. Okay, this is for roads. We measure all the roads. And for the, this is for the RLB. There were 56 acres of A, 187 acres of B, 427 acres of C, 431 acres of D, 32,170 feet of tile, and there were a couple of changes. I received a call from Mr. Owens. After reviewing, showing him the new tile, the new watershed, there was no change there. The cloths and the curry rim projects were reviewed, and we removed the benefits based on Blue Earth County's, the way you've done things in the past. Okay, for the as-submitted rim acres, as-submitted minus rim acres. So, the total net benefit was 1.534 million. Do I speak about the improvement now, or do I come back?
You can speak now.
Okay. And... And the improvement, if we go with options three, is 430,000 is the net benefit for option three. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dan at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No, no question for me, but appreciate looking into that easement, with the permanent easement and making that change. Thank you.
And thank you, Dan. And Bill and Lance, thank you for your help on this project also. It's appreciated. All right, this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to come and comment about the reports we've heard today on County Ditch 52 may do so at this time. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to less than three minutes. And then anyone calling in, please star six and unmute your phone and we will hear your Soon as Chuck's done there, we'll get the public hearing started.
Just in case I need to pull up a man.
Nope, that's fine, Chuck. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 52 about the reports? Lot of information out there today. Anyone on the phone that would like to comment about County Ditch 52? Okay, this will be the last call for anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 52, the reports we heard this morning. If not, I am going to close the public portion of this hearing. I will bring it back to the board, the Drainage Authority. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the presented detailed survey report and the viewer's report included in the findings and facts order.
App moves. People, a second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Discussion, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Clean.
What happens if the DNR does not give us the permit that we need on that?
We can utilize the existing outlet.
Okay.
We don't need to make any changes to the creek itself. Thus, we would not need a permit. That's what we're proposing at this time. So, but I will review that with Dan Geralamo.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
And I appreciate you trying to reach out to them, Chuck. And I encourage you to keep doing so. And if you need any help from someone on the board here to get a meeting, let us know and see if we can help you.
We're making some progress.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Because I think it's important. It's very important that we have that in our, in our meetings and talked about, so.
Well, in that, I just might add that it doesn't just affect this project.
No.
It's multiple projects.
All of our projects.
It would be much easier if we had better communication lines.
Because this board is very concerned about the environmental impacts of everything that's going on with water quality. Any other questions from the board? I got a motion and a second to approve the County Ditch Viewer's Report and the Detailed Survey Report. If there's no further discussion, I will ask, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right, at this time, we have a resolution for finance for the proposed improvement. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for the finance?
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The County Ditch 52 Improvement Hearing is done. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Let's just take a couple-minute change-out here and then we'll start on our next one All righty, we will now continue on with our agenda. And at this time, we will be talking about County Ditch 86, the improvement hearing. So, good morning. Our hearing today is the preliminary hearing on proposed improvements to County Ditch 86. The proposed purpose of this hearing is to consider the petition for the drainage project with all matters pertaining to the preliminary survey report. We will now hear from the drainage staff to go over the jurisdictional documents. Craig.
Okay. County Ditch 86 was first established in 1956 and is located in Decoria and Beaufort Townships. On June 7th, 2021, a petition was received for the improvement of County Ditch 86. On June 22nd, 2021, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles Brandl to prepare our preliminary survey report for the improvement of Branch 2 and 3. On September 15th, 2021, Mr. Brandl submitted the preliminary survey report to the Property Environmental Resources Department. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we requested Drainage Authority to direct the engineer to prepare a detailed survey report and appoint viewers to determine the benefits and damages. Hearing, the hearing notice was mailed to landowners on October 25th, 2021. And now, we did get a DNR report on Friday. I don't know if that was, got emailed to you or?
Got emailed separately.
Yeah, emailed separately. We got it on Friday morning. Subject: County Ditch 86 Lateral's 2 and 3 Improvement, Preliminary Hearing, Engineer Report, Blue Earth County, Minnesota. Dear Mr. Ostenson, on behalf of the Director of Division of Ecological Water Resources of the Department of Natural Resources, I offer the following comments on the preliminary engineer's report for the, the project referenced above. In accordance with Minnesota Statutes 103 8.255. Of general concern in all proposed ditch improvements is the cumulative effect that projects have upon downstream resources and property owners in terms of quantity and quality of water that has received. Project-specific or cumulative impacts from ditch projects can result in downstream flooding, erosion, degrading water quality. For those reasons, we urge careful evaluation of the project to ensure that it is consistent with the priority concerns identified in the Blue Earth Water Plan. Water Plan includes priorities for water quality, drainage management, erosion prevention, and emphasizes the use of best management practices to control and reduce excess nutrients from entering surface waters. Project-specific comments. The drainage standard of .5 inches a day is exceeded significantly and we believe that the improvement is overdesigned. The proposal includes a new tile that provided a drainage coefficient of .75 to .78 inches per day. A small tile, a smaller tile, when combined with the in-place private tile, would likely provide the same drainage coefficient if both were accounted for in the modeling. Also, the increased drainage coefficients will aggravate the channel erosion in the open ditch and at the system outlet. Page nine of the preliminary engineer's reports includes Table 2 Overflow CFS for existing conditions and for the proposed outflow rates vary between a decrease of .08 cubic feet per second during the 10-year event and an increase of 5 cubic feet per second during the 100-year event. How can you have a 558% increase in Branch 2 but no increase in the flow at the CD 86 outlet? If all of this additional flow discharge is occurring on the backside of these hydrological peaks, this added flow volume should be represented at the preliminary engineer's report and the final engineer's report to accurately assess the downstream impact of improving this project. Outlet discharge rates should be reduced to less than or equal to the existing peak duration flow rates. The Big Cobb Creek is already impaired by altered hydrology, increased flood in frequency and duration, as well as a well-documented increase in problem of this watershed. The outlet photo should be taken looking upstream from the receiving channel to better show the outlet pipe to document its condition. Is the outlet currently stable? The plan profile on pages 22 and 23 show the new tile being installed approximately three feet below the existing open ditch invert elevation. The new 18-inch tile will have a .23% grade and the new 24-inch tile will have a .09% grade. We believe that the slopes are too flat for buried tile and will not improve the drainage as portrayed in the preliminary engineer's report. This preliminary engineer's report and a future final engineer's report should include plans to store more water on the landscape to mitigate the increased flows in the open ditch. In addition to storing water on the landscape, these restorations would also provide better infiltration habitat and water quality. Other wetland restorations have been completed in the watershed, so the practice has been proven in this area. Resources, and it just has a list of all the resources here, including Minnesota Department of Agriculture, BMP Manual, including cover crops. Peak flows runoff agricultural lands can be reduced. The use of cover crops, cover crops help protect soil, aid in the retention of soil moisture, build soil organic matters and improve water quality. Control drainage, controlled drainage systems allow for the increased management of soil moisture during the soil, during the summer. Drainage is restricted to allow increased water retention and soil profiles during the fall drainage and is increased to allow harvest and fall tillage. Minnesota Department of Water and Soil Resources provides grants to demonstrate and implement eligible best management practices. Grant funds are made available through the multi-purpose drainage management grant program. Please contact John Geralamo, Harry Hald, Hydrologist at 507-822-1559 or email dan geralamo@thestate.mn.us if you have any questions about this matter. And sincerely, Todd Colander, EWR District Manager.
Thank you, Craig. All right, at this time, we will move on to the engineer's report. Chuck Brandl and his colleague will be here to report on that.
All right. Good morning. This is Chuck Brandl again. I'm Kyle Boarding. With me, for Branch 2 and 3 of County Ditch 86, this is the PER, it's the middle step to get feedback from landowners and ensure that the project is practical, feasible, cost-effective. Essentially, this improvement replaces two branches with one and eliminates a private open ditch. So it's not a significant increase in flow. It's fixing tiles that are too shallow and practically too old at this, at this point. So, I'll let Kyle kind of go over the existing conditions and the proposed conditions.
So some of this will sound very similar to what we just heard for CD 52. As Craig mentioned, CD 86 lies within Decoria and Beaufort Townships of Blue Earth County, provides drainage to just over 5,000 acres of watershed with approximately 81 feet of fall within the watershed, seedy soils and agricultural crop production. A little bit about the history, it was constructed in the 1950s, which included open ditch and buried tile. There was one repair that happened in 2017 that replaced portions of the secondary mainline tile and also included spot fillings of the open ditch. In 1998, an improvement was completed that added a secondary mainline tile to aid in the drainage and also replaced 5,000 feet of Branch 1 tile with open ditch. Here's the current watershed. The red line represents the watershed boundary. The blue lines represent the open ditch and the black lines represent buried tile. Judicial ditch number 28 also utilizes the outlet of CD 86 as a drainage system. This current position is only looking at improving Branch 2 and Branch 3 of CD 86. The sub watershed of Branch 2 and 3 is this purple line, which is approximately 200 acres. So, 200 acres in, according to the 5,000 acres of the entire CD 86 watershed. Here are some site photos from the summer when we completed survey. The top photo on the left is the existing mainline open ditch that Branch 2 outlets into. The existing photo in the top right is the existing private ditch and the bottom photos are just general site photos. So, looking at the existing capacity, capacities, we look at the drainage coefficient, which is the amount of water the system can drain out in a 24-hour period. Branch 2 currently has 8-inch tile that has a .28 drainage coefficient. Branch 3 currently has a 12-inch tile at the outlet with a .24 drainage coefficient. From discussion with landowners and site visits, Branch 3 especially looks like it has some damages to it. Actually, from the steep tile grades can actually cause and has been cut off in some sections. So moving on to the proposed design, there are some parameters that we'd like to consider. We'd like to provide at least four feet of cover over the proposed tile to make sure we have adequate depth for private tile connections and just general operations of fund. Look at best management practices within the whole watershed and then size to a proper drainage coefficient. With this project, since we are in an isolated basin and we are filling in private ditch, we look to actually maintain a 3/4-inch drainage coefficient. Typical drainage systems can utilize runoff because we are in an isolated basin. We can't, the drainage and land is solely dependent on the drainage system itself.
Yeah, so essentially, we're looking at a higher drainage coefficient because it's taking surface water flow and tile.
And then we also look to make sure we have an adequate outlet. So here's the proposed watershed. The green line is the proposed tile. We are moving it a little bit to the west just because of the plans to push in private ditch and have sufficient cover.
Yeah, just, just a quick explanation. The, the two branches, if you want to point those out, they go through, the black lines go through, it's an old shallow lake. The ditch has cut through that lake and cut it in half and the soils have subsided. So, you have tile that's too shallow, is breaking up, and it's taking a considerable amount of flow from the north. So we're proposing to combine those into one tile, route it around the edge of the basin to protect the basin from flooding, take that water and get it into an area where we have depth to put in a tile that'll last hopefully 100-plus years.
So as Chuck mentioned, we would be combining into a similar Branch 2. This will be sized to a 24-inch and then also sized to just over 3/4-inch for the drainage coefficient. Then we also have this Branch 2A which provides access to the landowner to the north so he can still properly drain these fields. Just moving on to modeling, with all these drainage improvements, we do have to make sure we have adequate outlets. So we make sure, look at topography, topography of the system, land use coverage soils and create a model. So here on the left is our existing model, on the right is our proposed. This is for a 10-years, 24-hour rainfall event, which is just under 4 and 1/2 inches of rainfall. This is for a 10-year, 24-hour rainfall event, which is just under 4 1/2 inches rainfall. So areas in blue are going to be 0 to 1 feet of standing water. Areas that are yellow to red are going to be closer to 3 to 4 feet of standing water. As you can see, drains out very quickly once we have sufficient drainage in the proposed model and the existing model, since we do have the undersized drainage system and the damage to the existing tile, it takes a little bit longer to drain down. We did analyze the flows at the outlet of the CD86 system. As Chuck mentioned before, we are combining two branches and filling in private ditch. So when we look at the outlet system itself, we do not have any significant increases in flows at that level.
There was a DNR comment about significantly increasing flow at one point. That's because we were taking two tiles further upstream, combining them to one other point. So if this moves forward in the final engineers' report, we'll do a comparison, not at the same location, but we'll add up the different locations. We're taking two outlets, moving them to another location, and the DNR was commenting, why is it so high at this spot? Because we moved it along downstream on the open ditch. If that, if you can follow the...
The logic.
The logic there, yeah, sorry.
We did go through construction practices with landowners. We did have a landowner meeting two weeks ago. If anyone has any questions, we can address that.
We did put together temporary damages for the alignment. We are looking at separable maintenance on the project, which we'd ask to approve at the final engineers' report. So the cost of the project to repair the two branches that are currently there that are not functioning very well, it's about $125,000. The improvement costs are about $161,000, so the net cost of $36,000. When you add in some redetermination about these costs, the total project cost for landowner could be $162,000. We did look at multi-purpose drainage management. We have had multiple meetings on County Ditch 86 over the past four or five years. There have been some wetlands that have been put forth. There were some alternative side inlets that have been installed in this watershed. We did talk to the petitioner who's here about a wetland restoration on the lower part of his property. Because the ditch cuts through the middle of it, that would be somewhat difficult because typically wetland, from a wetland banking perspective, they want the whole basin, but we did discuss that with the landowner.
If I might add too, the landowner is in communication with the NRCS to actually add terraces within his landscape, so that cannot hold water back within the landscape itself.
And that was, those were also identified in the MDM plan. So the main comments from the DNR were the system exceeded the half-inch drainage coefficient. We discussed that because we're taking out an open ditch, we're adding an open ditch and tile, so we're looking at slightly higher capacity. Downstream impacts, when we looked at our model, they were insignificant. This is all, the open ditch has the capacity to handle this, but because we're combining two tiles and a private ditch, we do not have an increase in flows downstream. There was a comment that the slopes are too flat. There's a Minnesota drainage manual. Blue Earth County has installed tiles at much flatter slopes than what's being proposed, and we are above the minimum standards that the NRCS set forward when they did their study quite a few years ago on the tile. And we can look at, like Kyle said, we are adding, looking at potentially adding some terraces and some small storage areas within the watershed. With that, we'd recommend approval of the preliminary engineers' report, appoint viewers. We feel that the project at this point is cost-effective, practical, feasible, and the outlet is adequate.
All right. Thank you, Chuck and Kyle. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Those individuals wishing to make comments on County Ditch 86 may do so at this time. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you are calling in or on your computer, just unmute your computer or star six your phone, and we hear your testimony at this time.
Hello, Board and Ditch Authority and ISG. My name is Steve Trio, and I, my son Aaron is the current landowner. I farmed it for 27 years, this particular piece, but I wanted to state that Aaron and I are, were the first in the county to be water-certified, and so we're very much aware of what the DNR is saying, but we strongly disagree because we're currently working with NRCS to put terraces in such water grassways. We don't have what's currently going on. As we all know, down in the bottom ground, it's hard to maintain ditch slopes and everything, and there's a lot of erosion going on in this private ditch. By enclosing all this, we are going to improve the water quality, which is a high priority for Aaron and I. And by establishing, as you can already see in the maps, there's already established CRP in that area. There's already been established CRP long before it was mandated along the ditch 86. So we are really proactive in making sure, and this is probably the, our driving force of this project, is to improve the water quality downstream, because we also farm downstream from ditch 86. So anyway, I thought I'd just kind of, yeah, that comment that we are, that's one thing I think the DNR missed, is that we are currently working with NRCS to put in terraces and sort of slow the water down, clean the water up before it enters into the ditch versus that open, private, small ditch, you might call it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for those comments.
We'll add that for our final engineer's report in this quarter. We'll add that, those comments in that design.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wishing to comment on the County Ditch 86 project? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on the ditch project? Hearing no public comment, I will close the public portion of this meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
We do approve.
Say a motion and a second to approve the detailed survey report and appoint viewers at this point. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 86 public hearing. Thank you everyone for your time. And you got one more item, Craig.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Multi-purpose drainage.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Thank you, Jen. You guys did a good job.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Multi-year levies.
Yeah, this is background. The following attachments are the recommended single-year and multi-year special drainage system levies payable for 2022 and beyond. Attachment A lists the single-year levies for the Blue Earth County drainage systems, including the public drainage assessment that applies to all systems. Attachment B lists the multi-year levies for Blue Earth County drainage systems, including assessments for the principal amounts payable in 2022 on drainage ditch bonds issued in previous years. New internal financing processes may be used on the newly-levered multi-year levies, whereas they may be internally financed for all years or for the first year only before being converted to a bond. The financing method will be determined based on which option produces the most beneficial terms to the property owners. Recommended action: Approval of the attached resolution approving the collection of special drainage levies in 2022 as identified in the attachments.
Motion to accept.
I move the resolution.
Second.
First and a second. This is that meeting that Kevin and I and some staff go through everything and finalize everything, so this is just kind of a approval from the county board at this point, so. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Craig. Now you're done. All right, now we'll move on to planning and zoning. Good morning, Scott and John. How are you doing today?
Good morning, guys.
We just have a couple items to go over today, so we'll let you get started whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. PC 3621 is a request from the Johnson Family Revocable Living Trust for review and approval of the preliminary and final plats of the Johnson Family Trust subdivision, a two-outlet subdivision. The property includes areas zoned conservation, agricultural, highway business, and light industry, and is in the urban fringe overlay district of the city of Mankato. The property is located in the northwest quarter of Section 19 and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 19 in South Bend Township. Staff presented the report. The applicants were represented. The representative had no additional comments, and there was no other public comment. The chair asked the planning commission members for comments. Members indicated no concerns with the proposal. A commission member commented on the existing agricultural use of the property and the goal of the county land use plan to preserve agricultural land. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff, and the board action is the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, John. At this time, if there is anyone that wishes to comment on PC 3621, the Johnson Family Revocable Living Trust, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you're listening in online, please unmute your phone or your computer, and we will hear your testimony at this time. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3621? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 3621 for the Johnson Family Revocable Living Trust? Hearing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Got a second? Got a first and a second, so any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is PC 3721, and the applicants are Iris Nelson and Solar Club 31 LLC. Request is an interim use permit for a large solar energy system that has a capacity of 1 megawatt. Project is located in the Conservation District in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 5 Rapidan Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. A representative of the applicant indicated to the planning commission that a compliance inspection on the Nelson Septic system had been completed the previous day, and he added that the results would be finalized before the county board meeting. One neighboring property owner stated that he had no objection to the proposal. There was no other public comment. The chair asked the planning commission for a comment, and members indicated there were no concerns with the proposal. A planning commission member stated that it was good to hear from the neighbor with no objections, and then a member also added that it appears that the site is an appropriate location for a proposal like this, especially with the lack of a need for screening. Following discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff, and that the interim use permit be valid for a period of 45 years until November 23, 2066. And the applicant has completed that compliance inspection and got the results of that, which were found it to be noncompliant with the failure to protect groundwater, so it would be a two-year upgrade on that system, and the board action is a resolution. Okay. Thank you, Scott. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3721 for Iris Nelson and the Solar Club 31 LLC? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you're calling in on phone or on a computer, unmute your phone or computer, and we will hear your testimony at this time. Good morning.
Good morning. Chuck Beisner, 4974 here Lockman Drive, Alexandria, Minnesota. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to support and agree with your recommendations. If you're, answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 3721? Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 3721 for Iris Nelson and Solar Club 31 LLC? Hearing no more public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
We do approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Another exciting solar operation. Good.
Well, and the location of it's kind of nice because it's, you know, we'll actually get some electricity from that area.
Mm-hmm. So, all right. If there's no other questions, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. All right. This time, is John in the building? We will...
I see him in the hallway.
There's a whole bunch of them.
Is there? Oh. We'll do this, and then we'll take a short break.
Good morning, John.
I talked about the DNR.
How's John today?
Doing well.
How's everybody doing today?
Good morning, John.
Good morning.
Hey, John. How are you?
Good morning.
We've got some Veterans Court stuff to talk about. Awesome.
Yes, it is. It's a great opportunity for us. So I attached them to the memo that I provided. You'll find an agreement between Blue Earth County Community Corrections and the state of Minnesota through the 5th Judicial District. And so what we have here is an agreement for the balance of this fiscal year, so this would run through the end of June of 2022, beginning December 1st of 2021. What we have is an agreement for our department to provide probation services and case management services to clients that are participants in the 5th Judicial District Veterans Treatment Court. What's unique about this opportunity is that the Treatment Court or the Veterans Court is a judicial district Veterans Court, and not just only Blue Earth County residents. So we do have participants that are also members or residents of other counties. So this agreement also includes an opportunity for us to provide some case management. We won't be doing any probation services because we would not be doing that for clients that reside in other counties, but we would be acting as what we would call a liaison or somebody that's, you know, giving information back to that home county's probation officer. So you have a participant from Wattenwan County, we would be acting as a liaison because we are kind of a sitting member at the Treatment Court table for the Veterans Court. And as I said, this would expire at the end of June of 2022. So this was an opportunity that presented itself over the summer. There had been a contract filled, this position had been filled, and it was not anymore, and there had been an RFP out there. And they had approached us and asked if we would be interested in taking on the case management duties in addition to also providing the probation services for the clients that are residents of Blue Earth County. And we've got some things that we're going to have to communicate with both the court and our other stakeholders on in this regard. You know, I looked at this as an opportunity. We're very invested in Veterans Court. We want to support the people that are participants in that, while at the same time, we have to make sure that we're balancing our needs of our own department as well, while taking on some of the tasks that may be associated with the residents of other counties. And so we've got some meetings scheduled for December. If everything is approved, where, you know, we can start to work on what this would look like. And I said I'd be interested in taking this on until the end of June. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue this relationship as long as it goes well, but this is just kind of, you know, getting in, in the door, so to speak, and starting to build on that relationship with the Veterans Court. So I would just respectfully ask for approval of that contract.
Okay. Motion to settle the contract. Mark, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Good.
I have a question.
Continue.
This is new money, I'm assuming, but additional responsibility too.
Yes.
It'll be interesting to see the metrics to see what the cost benefit is.
Yes, absolutely. I think that is really what we need to take a look at, is that cost benefit, taking on some additional tasks in our department, some orientation for clients that are coming into the Veterans Court. And that was some of my, you know, concerns and questions, and, you know, how much, you know, additional work is this going to require, and trying to strike that balance to make sure that we're not overextending as well. And at the same time, I viewed it as a great opportunity. We're clearly very supportive of the Veterans Court, and we've always been at that table. And so, you know, it was one of those things where we thought, yes, for the right reasons, let's do this, and let's give this a shot.
I think all of us are extremely... I think all of us are extremely supportive of the Veterans Court, the Family Court, and the Drug Court. Um, it makes a difference in people's lives, so it'll be interesting to see how this rolls.
Yeah, and it's just a unique court with it being multi-jurisdictional.
Right.
Um, that's really the uniqueness of this court. You don't have a lot of treatment courts. Um, I believe the only other Veterans Court that will be multi-jurisdictional that I know of that's starting up is in, uh, Scott and Dakota County, I believe. And so, we're kind of talking to them a little bit to see how they're navigating through some of the case management issues as well.
Are they independent, or do they do it together?
Scott and Dakota?
Yeah.
They're just getting started to do it together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That'll be interesting to see, too.
Yeah, and one of the things we actually learned recently was, uh, there is a statute that allows veterans to attend their Veterans Court in the county in which they work and not necessarily reside. And so, that's just another issue that, that came up recently. I was talking about with our advisory board. That's unique in that Veterans Court setting. Uh, you may have a veteran that lives in St. James but works in Mankato. Um, and we're just learning a little bit about that as well, and that's another thing that we're having to have discussions about, is how does that look? Because typically in the probation world, you're supervised where you live, um, and not where you work. Um, and so that's the opposite of what we're used to. And so, we're trying to, you know, navigate through and have discussions about what that looks like. So, we also have that to work with.
One other question. Are we doing, um, many Zoom meetings, or is it most face-to-face now?
Veterans, uh, Court.
Well, I'm saying, in general.
Or in general.
In general.
Uh, we're doing as much face-to-face as we can. We're trying not to lose sight of some of the advantages that we gain, though. If you have somebody living... We're a college town. If you have kids that went home, you know, up to the metro area or in another location, and it works better for us to communicate over, over Zoom, um, we'll do that, you know, in order to make sure that we're able to get our work done. But, I mean, by and large, our first preference is to be, you know, face-to-face and in person with our clients. That's, that's what we like.
I certainly understand that, but there are times when somebody has to take the afternoon off in order to meet with their PO for a half hour.
Exactly. Yes, and, and that's where we've thought, you know, we need to continue to operate in a fashion that makes the most sense and utilize the technology because, um, we have it readily available now, and we found that it can be really, uh, you know, helpful. And we have actually run into, uh, things that, it's changed the way we do business with clients that live out of state as well. Um, they don't appear in person for a sentencing, so they don't walk down to our office. And so, having to do those, uh, investigations over Zoom, um, has been, you know, kind of now a way of doing business. Um, so, you know, you're trying to adapt, you know, as you kind of go along and evolve.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chair, go ahead and answer. I don't have a question, more of a comment. I think you have a board that's extremely, uh, appreciative of both, uh, Community Corrections and the county attorney's office for the Veterans Court. Uh, giving all the, you know, what we do to help our veterans across the region is, is a huge, huge benefit, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo the same thing. I've been, Mark and I have been to one or two of the Drug, Drug Court and the Veterans Court. I have not been to the Family Court yet one, but, uh, a very interesting process.
Yes.
Very time-consuming and labor-intensive, but also beneficial.
And, and each court is unique of those three. They all have, you know, about the Veterans Court, it's about accessing services. And you can say the same for a Drug Court, but it's looking at it and trying to have, you know, each one specializes in its own way, you know? And, and for the Veterans Court, you're really about accessing the VA and accessing those services, and also the mentoring that goes alongside with veterans as well. Um, so we, yes, we absolutely want to continue to support and advocate for those things.
Awesome. Good. All right. Well, I got a motion and a second for the Veterans Court Contract and Cooperative Agreement. If there's no further discussion, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, John, for your good report. All right. At this time, let's just take a 15-minute break. Sorry, you guys, but we've been hearing a lot of public comment this morning, so let's be back at 10:40.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will reconvene our meeting here and we got Ryan Tildes.
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for some additional time here this morning. Our first action item, I'd like to introduce an esteemed colleague, Wayne Sandberg is the Washington County Engineer. And Wayne is here on behalf of the National Association of County Engineers to present our very highly skilled staff with the national awards. Wayne, please.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Mr. Chair Commissioners, good morning. As Ryan Tildes, my name is Wayne Sandberg. I serve as the County Engineer for Washington County, but also the privilege to serve as the National Association of County Engineers' North Central Region Vice President. That includes Illinois, Wisconsin, Minnesota, the Dakotas, Montana, and Wyoming. And that's the role that brings me here today. So I'm honored to be here today to recognize Blue Earth County Assistant Public Works Director, Stephen Gander, who receives the 2020 National Association of County Engineers Program Manager of the Year Award. Now this award is presented annually to recognize a NACE member who is a county project or program manager working for outstanding service and meritorious achievement in managing a construction project or a program. Now every year, Minnesota seeks nominations for this national award. In 2020, County Engineer Ryan Tildes nominated Stephen for his work in leadership guiding Blue Earth County Road One, the old Highway 66 Turn Back Reconstruction Project. Now as you know, that roadway was fraught with sharp curves, limited site distances, narrow shoulders, drainage challenges, and steep slopes. Stephen led the construction project that balanced the design standards, impacts, costs, and using a variety of elements including the natural preservation routes, design standards. He worked and led significant rock excavation, stage reinforced stabilized slopes to support the roadway, and provided some innovative leadership in stormwater conveyance and treatment to protect and enhance water quality. Beyond his work at Blue Earth County, Stephen is also active in our County Engineers Association. He serves on the One Office Steering Committee for us. And with all that said, it is no surprise to me personally and to our organization that Stephen would be recognized for his strong leadership and innovative thinking. Blue Earth County has developed a reputation as an outstanding organization to work for. And that reputation begins to tap with you at the County Board. Over the years, I've gotten to know some of you, and I can tell you that your reputation you have is as a board of strong leadership yourselves, but also strong support of your staff and the work that they do. And that support is what allows your staff, like Public Works Director Ryan Tildes, to find, recruit, lead, and mentor quality employees, and for project managers like Stephen to grow and become leaders themselves. So thank you to Blue Earth County Board for your leadership and your strong support of your staff, and congratulations to Stephen Gander for his outstanding leadership and innovation. This is a well-deserved award, and I'm honored to be able to be here to present it to you today. So congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Oh, connected.
Yep.
Pause. Thank you.
Get a picture with the three of them, Jess. Along with Ryan, too.
You gonna picture all three of us?
Yeah.
All right.
I don't usually see Stephen dressed up.
Stephen's gonna forget his whole speech by the time he gets down with this photo op.
Yeah, you have to give a speech.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say. I just want to say it's really an honor. Thank you, Ryan, for nominating Wayne. It's a great privilege, and it's always nice to be recognized by your peers. I just want to put out a quick thanks to my staff. You know, it's one thing for me to get an award, but certainly they do, you know, ninety-five percent of the work out there. And, you know, we're dealing with the contractor and the construction and the long hours. So huge thanks to them, because it's a team effort out there, so. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Wayne, for coming down, presenting that. Appreciate it.
I hope the drive is nice.
It was nice. Looking forward to it right back. Thank you all.
Thank you, Wayne, and congratulations on your daughter's confirmation, too.
I was confirmed this weekend.
Ah.
That's pretty awesome.
All right, Ryan, you still have a couple items for us to deal with?
I do. I'm trying to get those relatively quickly here.
You're fine.
I have two action items, and the reason we're bringing these today versus waiting until December is to take advantage of current state bid pricing. So with the COVID relief funds that the county received, we did receive direction to attack our deferred equipment list. So with that, I have two pieces of equipment today, and then we'll be bringing two additional pieces of equipment in December, or two additional capital items. So the first item for consideration is purchase of a front-end wheel loader. These are comparably spec machines purchased off of the state bid, and then we utilize additional costs to meet our specifications that are above and beyond what the base bid is for the state bid pricing. So we have Ziegler Incorporated Caterpillar 950M four-wheel-drive front-end loader. Bid price, $237,144.24. And from RDO Equipment in North Mankato, a John Deere 644P four-wheel-drive front-end loader. The John Deere was considerably less, at $143,222.68. With that being said, we've had very good representation from John Deere in our fleet. This is consistent with other front-end loaders that we have, so I would recommend approval of the purchase of the John Deere 644P.
I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, you got a motion in a second for the new John Deere for $143,222.68. Any discussion?
Seems like a huge difference.
Yeah.
It is.
Is there, is there stuff that the Caterpillar can do that the John Deere can't, or...
Not, not for the benefit purposes of what...
I mean, I've always figured you're, with John Deere, you're spending more money for the name, but it seems like this is the lower end piece.
So again, we, when we provide the bid documents to John Deere and Caterpillar, we don't just go directly off of state bid. We want to ensure that they both meet certain horsepower requirements, fluid capacities, loading, hauling capacities, that they also have certain amenities or options on the piece of equipment above and beyond the base piece of equipment. And so sometimes getting to those additional items that we include for both pieces of equipment that we find necessary for our operations, that tags on more price to Caterpillar. Now, in this circumstance, I think if you recall when we looked at the motor graders on the last bid, Caterpillar had additional costs to meet our bid specifications, whereas John Deere didn't. In this circumstance, there's no additional pricing noted to meet our bid specs. But again, we're going all the way down to fluid flow rates for hydraulics to ensure that we're getting an apples-to-apples comparison. I think a lot of the times what you'll end up seeing is, if we don't specify the capacities and the power and the performance, then a lot of the times they'll try to provide somewhat of a lesser machine to gauge that cost gap. So we want to ensure that we're bidding apples-to-apples.
Both are well-made. It's just, it's just great to get this kind of price.
Absolutely.
I was amazed at the differential.
Okay, any other discussion? I got a motion in a second for new John Deere. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And then I also, the second, third, I'm sorry, the second action item or item number three in your packet is consideration of a new 2022 loader-mounted snow blower. This is based, again, off of the state bid or source well pricing, but because of the RDO and the McQueen sourcing being fairly local, we also like to put these out and specify equipment operation capacities and ensure that we're getting an apples-to-apples comparison. So RDO Equipment bid the Fair Snow Creed 948D at a price of $155,123. McQueen Equipment bid the LaRue D50 at $180,266. The Fair is a second snow blower unit. That you may recall, we purchased one last year. We've been happy with the performance of it and how it operates. So this will be a second unit, and again, this is replacing those very antique snow blower trucks that we have, as well as a very antique borderline spare parts front-end snow blower that we have buried in a shed. Right now, it's not operable. So this will be a great piece of equipment. This one, I would anticipate, will be housed in one of our own shops to help cover Southern Minnesota better.
All right, we have a motion to the council.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the Fair snow blower. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
All right. And I believe we have Scott from Alliant Engineering joining us virtually for presentation of an intersection control evaluation study for the intersection of our county-stated Highway 16, which is Stolzmann Road, and county-stated Highway 60, which is stadiums just at the bottom of the hill in West Mankato.
All right, Scott, are you... Oh, there you are.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. I think we're ready for your presentation. If you're ready.
Yes. Am I able to share my screen in that panel?
Yep.
Sorry for the delay here. I want to share the technical logistics here, so it's a little thing there. So like, Ryan, Scott, I was going to hear from Alliant Engineering. Alliance has a change in this screening. Do you perform an intersection control evaluation as opposed to the state intersection? So usually when I present these types of meetings, I like to just flash a quick agenda on the screen to show everyone what I might talk about today. We're going to go over the little bit about the project background and purpose. I'm going to describe the intersection control evaluation process, and then go through some of the study results that we obtained through the course of the study. So for those of you not familiar here, Stolzmann Road, stated road is on the east side of Minnesota State University. These are the intersection of two county roadways, CASAS 16 and CASAS 16. So when MABO put out the RFP for this intersection control evaluation, it really was, we're driving at two items here. First is that we wanted an analysis done to determine if there is a need for some sort of improvements to the project, to the intersection. And then if improvements were deemed warranted, then what type of improvements should be considered, you know, for funding and subsequent implementation? So when we worked through the ICE process, we concluded with a preferred alternative, and I'll get to that here towards the end. We definitely wanted to have preferred alternative be in line with some of the community goals in the Mankato, North Mankato area. And obviously, we want to have a safe and efficient transportation system that's accessible and at least at all. You know, a number of the other improvement or goals, I've got it on the screen here. So not only is it important for the transportation system to be safe and efficient for motorized users, but also those non-motorized users. To really have a really well-refounded, multi-modal transportation system. And, you know, the final thing, you want to have a balanced approach to determining alternatives and ultimately selecting that preferred alternative. So when we go through the ICE, and I refer to it as an ICE, just because I use the term on an hourly basis, but intersection control evaluation study process, it's a mendot established study process. And so the state uses this type of process across, you know, the state for intersections that are under their jurisdiction. And the beauty of this process is that it really is applicable to all jurisdictions, not just the state. And so this is applicable for county intersections as well as even city intersections. And so when we go through the process, you start out with a data collection effort and really try and obtain a good understanding of the current conditions that are existing at the intersection today. From there, we transition to looking out into the future and growing our traffic volumes, looking at projections for length, those types of things, and really trying to get a glimpse into the future as to what the intersection would likely operate like if nothing were to be built as far as improvements go. From there, usually can, I readily identify, you know, intersection needs and deficiencies, and develop alternatives for further analysis and consideration as we go forward into the study process. And so from there, you take those alternatives, do more of a detailed analysis in terms of looking at the traffic operations, the traffic safety of the intersection, look at the cost implications of these alternatives and the footprint that they may have on an intersection, and, you know, the right-of-way needs that would be part of that. And then just look overall at the transportation system as a whole and how this is fit in the network in general. And we conclude with kind of stacking all of the analysis and evaluation criteria next to each other to see which alternative is a leading candidate and a preferred alternative going forward for conclusion in the report. So this process includes community engagement, and we did, in fact, do some community engagement as it relates to the study. And so we engaged and had a listening session with Minnesota State University in May of this year to learn what the university feels are important factors that need to be analyzed as part of the intersection control evaluation. We also had a project management team that consists of members from City Mankato, Blue Earth County, of course, and the Mankato, North Mankato area, Mankato Mining Corporation. So this project management team met in late May, and then we put the project on hold through the summer months, and then resumed everything in earnest in September when both Minnesota State University classes were in session, as well as the public schools in Mankato were in session. So we met with a PMT to reveal Phase One results in October and Phase Two results of the ICE earlier this month, actually. So getting into some of those baseline existing conditions here, one of the first things that we did was pull crash data for the subject intersection. We pulled a ten-year crash history, and it revealed that there were ten crashes that occurred during that time period. There were three angle crashes, and then there were two crashes that were all vehicle bike interactions. And those are the two that I circled on our collision diagram that's on the right side of the screen. So when we crunched the numbers for this over a ten-year period, given the crash rate of .25 crashes per million entrant vehicles, and so the state average for side suite stop-controlled intersections is .09 crashes per million entrant vehicle. So that crash rate is a little bit higher than the state average. So we calculated the critical rate, crash rate for this intersection, and it's slightly above that critical rate. And so a number of the crashes that are occurring there are a number are statistically significant. And so, you know, improvements to the intersection are warranted based on a statistical analysis of their action. When we look at the baseline conditions as far as the traffic operations go, we utilized turning movement count data that we collected in September of this year, which I mentioned a few minutes ago. And then we also compared this data to values that... And then we also compared this data to values that we were able to obtain through a third-party software application that was able to capture data prior to the COVID pandemic. And so we compared pre-COVID numbers to this year's numbers. We're seeing that the numbers from this year were just a tad lower than what we'd seen historically in September of 2019 and 18 and so on. So we applied a small COVID factor to the volume that we collected this year to make those numbers to a better grade. When we look at a operations and capacity analysis of the AMP and PMP hours for the intersection, the intersection overall is operating at a level of service A with very little delay for users of the intersection. We break it down a little bit further and look at it by approach. All the approaches are operating with acceptable levels of service net equates to delay per vehicle. And so level of service A and B is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 0 to 15 seconds of delay per vehicle on these approaches. We look at it from a movement standpoint, all of the one movement is really operating with acceptable levels of service. The one movement that we're seeing specifically during the morning peak hour is the westbound left turn to go south, so westbound stadium to go south into Stolzmann. And so that unfortunately is operating at a level of service F with high levels of delay upwards of 120 seconds of delay. What I circled on the right side of the screen in my diagram here is showing the peak hour volumes, and specifically, the 17 vehicles making the westbound left during the AM peak is a very, very low number of vehicles wishing to make that movement. I mean, you can see, we have 17 in the AM peak, we have 65 in the PM peak. And so, when I reviewed the video that we recorded at the intersection a little bit more to try and understand the amount of delay that was occurring with that movement, yeah, you know, I saw several times a vehicle pulling up on the side of the street, which I circled here, on the left side of the screen. You can see the timestamp in the lower right on the screenshot. And, you know, 140 seconds provided at angles is just now being able to make that movement. So, yeah, that's a failing level of service over, you know, a little over a two-minute time period. However, when I backed the video up a minute before this vehicle arrived, and then looked a minute after this vehicle arrived, seeing several opportunities, several gaps that are present at the intersection where that left turn movement could relate here. And so, and in fact, this image here, I don't know if you can see what I'm circling, I guess you can't see what I'm circling here. This image is taken just after that previous image, that silver vehicle made the movement. And so this vehicle is waiting behind them, and once they moved, or once they made the left turn, and this one was able to come in right behind and make the left turn as well. So I guess the conclusion here, you know, there are periods, short periods of time where there is quite a bit of delay for that westbound left. But if you look a little bit bigger picture, it seems to be at times when there's an influx of traffic at the intersection briefly, and then it dissipates, and so it's at capacity.
I might jump in, Scott.
Yes.
For the commissioners, this is really why we initiated the study, was because of complaints that were received about that specific turning movement. And it did confirm some of the things we suspected, but it also, I think, helped us give a stronger overall level of confidence that overall the intersection is performing as we kind of thought it was. We'll go farther into that, but I did want to just stop and point out that really this turning movement issue is why we initiated the study through the MAPLE. Please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. By all means, if I gloss over something important like that, feel free to interrupt me here, so. So, I guess we'd sort of transition into some of the alternatives that the PMT discussed and evaluated. So, we always start with a no-build type option, alternative zero, that's if we don't do anything. Obviously, the big advantage to that is there's no cost, there's no risk involved there. Disadvantage, of course, is there's no safety or delay type improvements, those are, as everybody can probably understand. So I have four final alternatives. So the first one that we came up with was pretty high-level, just implement an always-stop. So we had Stolzmann and stadium traffic come to a complete stop, much like the Stadium and James intersection is configured just to the east of here. Pretty low cost, you know, there's an advantage because there's some driver familiarity. Couple disadvantages, I guess first and foremost, when we look at traffic engineering standards that we follow here in the state and across the country, you know, there's specific warrants for the installation of all of our stop. And this intersection does not need those warrants. And the second drawback here is that, by, if we were to implement a warrant-type of traffic control device such as an always-stop, it may experience an increase in crashes, specifically rear-end type crashes where orders maybe are expecting to have to come to a complete stop. The final drawback is that, you know, right now, stadium is size-three stop control, and Stolzmann is not, so Stolzmann vehicles proceed to the intersection essentially unimpeded. If we were to put always-stop, we'd obviously have traffic stopping at Stolzmann, which would add delay to those users. Second alternative is a traffic signal, fairly common. It used to be, I think, the traffic control choice by a lot of communities. Times have changed, it's a little bit better. But it comes with a fairly significant cost, price tag here, with, you know, a quarter million dollars roughly. Couple advantages in that, you know, drivers are familiar with these types of traffic control devices as an assigned runway. But if we start looking at the drawbacks, much like always-stop, looking at those traffic engineering standards that we follow, the same type of standards exist for traffic signals, warrants are not met for traffic signal here. Traffic signals are proven to have a safety increase in crashes and for safety when it comes to those rear-end type crashes. In this particular instance, traffic signal probably operate fairly efficiently during peak hours of the day, but in those off-peak periods of the day, when currently side street traffic on stadium would pull up to this intersection and likely find more than acceptable gaps for a good portions of the day, you know, the traffic signal would be installed probably with resting green on, excuse me, on Stolzmann. So stadium traffic would pull up, pull up, excuse me, stadium traffic would pull up on a red, you have to wait for the signal to cycle before they're served. So you'd see an increase in delay for those side street users during the off-peak periods. The final drawback to traffic signals that has some ongoing annual maintenance costs that I think everybody is accustomed to with electricity and, you know, maintaining signal indications and some of those things. The next alternative we came up with was simply a rectangular rapid flash beacon specifically for the crossing on the north leg of this intersection. And so these types of systems can be installed at a relatively low cost, have advantages because they really enhance the pedestrian crossing, and these systems are proven to have improved yield rates to pedestrians. The other thing I'd note is that there's a multi-use trail on the west side of Stolzmann, and then on the stadium, there's a, there's a sidewalk facility on the north side of stadium that transitions as we get closer to that skew of the hill in more of a trail type facility. And so by putting this on the north side, north leg of this intersection, you would be able to, you know, enhance the connection of those two facilities. So some drawbacks to this, much like a traffic signal, you'd have annual maintenance costs. I think that'd be in the neighborhood of the traffic signal, these annual costs. Second drawback here is that you're enhancing a crossing that's good, but the crossing right now is a pretty wide crossing. You've got, you know, two, three lanes and then a left turn lane, so you're kind of crossing three lanes of traffic. I mean, you're doing that now, but you're really trying to draw attention to a crossing that's still pretty wide here. And then the other drawback here is that this type of system doesn't really provide any sort of improvement to any of the delay challenges that we're seeing specifically with that westbound left. Variation of this alternative, alternative three, was to go with a RRP for the north leg, but then also try and repurpose curvy curved roadway width in a way that we can provide a fairly narrow but still usable six-foot-wide pedestrian refuge. So you have the same benefits and same drawbacks with RRP, but, you know, you have the added benefit of really providing the opportunity for these non-motorized users to cross one direction of the approach to traffic at a time, and that certainly would improve the pedestrian safety here substantially. You know, this does come at a significantly higher cost than just the RRP by itself. The last alternative that we explored was a urban compact roundabout, has a cost far higher than any of the other alternatives that we discussed today. This type of intersection improvement would address some of the existing angle crashes that we're seeing today, and roundabouts are proven to have a substantial reduction in overall severity of crashes. I'll also note, and you can see this in the pros list, that in, I've done ICES the last couple of years for MAPLE that have concluded with roundabout recommendations, and lo and behold, several of these have been installed here recently. And so Mankato is very pro-roundabout, there's a roundabout for the east side of stadium. So all that to say that users of the roadways in the Mankato area are certainly more accustomed to roundabouts than other parts of the state and even the country here. You know, there are some significant drawbacks with the roundabout being met, that the cost is sky-high. And this type of intersection improvement would come with a fairly large footprint, and so it has some significant impacts to a couple of quadrants. And there's a Mankato State, not Mankato State, Minnesota State University sign in the southeast quadrant that would likely be impacted by roundabout heavy vehicles going through roundabouts in this type of treatment, given that the size of this roundabout would just have to mount, they have to mount, you know, over the center island. The last thing is that we may have roundabouts installed, typically need to install the roadway lighting at the intersection itself, and given the nature of this location and a little bit more residential type area, it has some lighting that would impact adjacent property owners. So, PMT convened earlier this month, and the thought was that the alternative three with just the RRP would be a, would be the preferred alternative and recommended improvement option for this intersection, given that we have some crash issues that pertain to those vehicle bikes, and this would definitely hopefully bring attention to those non-motorized users crossing the roadway. And given the low cost of this improvement, seemed to be an attractive choice. And if the RRP were to be installed, you know, future considerations could be given for going with alternative 3A, which would include the pedestrian refuge in the center, that RRP would still be able to be used if something were to be installed like this. And so the thought was if, funny, were to be secured down the road, then something like this with the pedestrian refuge could be considered. So our next steps for this ICE study project is a formal written intersection control evaluation report that has been prepared and is currently under review by the PMT. And so we'd be looking to incorporate comments from the PMT into our final recommendation in a formal report document next month. So I've got the study contact information on the screen, and I guess I will stop it there for further dialogue and any questions I think might be answered.
All right, thank you, Scott, for that report.
Mr. Chair, the two bike crashes, is that in the last 10 years or is it a different timeframe?
It is in the last 10 years.
Other questions and comments? Again, this is just a preliminary report, and first time we're looking at it, so if we can work through it and come up with further.
For sure.
Vance? Well, I'm looking at this, my two favorite are number one and number three. Cost has a lot to do with it, but when I'm looking at number one, just putting in stop signs, were we thinking of the flashing stop sign, you know, the one that has, you know, maybe a solar light on it so it's flashing all the time, or are we thinking just a regular stop sign?
As part of the study, I guess we didn't get into the specifics on a blinker flash type enhanced stop application. So I would say that that could be something that if the direction that the city and county want to proceed as an always-stop, that could be something that can be discussed a little further. I think what I would recommend is that probably don't want to install that unless you do install always-stop when you encounter some specific crash issues related to the visibility of the stop signs. So I usually lean towards that being an enhancement type of an item more than a installing right out of the gate type of an item.
And for the record, Scott, I think, maybe just to clarify too, this one was not a preferred alternative because the warrants were not met, which is kind of the traffic control criteria, when is it really truly justified and needed? And then obviously because of the increased delay that it would put on all of the traffic on Stolzmann. So we actually developed a comparison matrix that wasn't included in this pre-present So we actually developed a comparison matrix that wasn't included in this presentation that we went through. And as we started to wait the different alternatives, this one was not a preferred alternative.
Did we figure out what the backup would be on Stolzmann Road if we had four-way, a four-way stop?
Yeah, like Ryan said, this was something that we had put on the table for consideration. But the P M T felt that it wasn't an appropriate traffic control, so we didn't analyze it in great detail.
Okay.
I do not have the delay metrics or even queuing type metrics for this alternative.
All right.
I wanted to, I guess just for the record here, I wanted to be sure that we acknowledge that the project and the project team, the P M T, we did talk and discuss an always stop. So that it was on the table. It just, we didn't take it any further than that. And I guess I just want to point out that from an engineering standpoint, the always stop is not necessarily recommended. I will point out that the intersection just northeast at Stadium and James is an always stop. And so you have an always stop right next to this intersection. And so I think it'd be a little hypocritical if I said that, you know, we didn't really consider an always stop at all. We got one that seemingly is probably less justified than this intersection. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that this was something that was was on the table.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Looks like that's all we got for you, Scott. Thank you for the presentation and we will be in some discussion with Ryan and he can reach out to you and we'll just go from there.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate everyone's time and have a good holiday.
You also.
Thanks for getting played this week.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
So with the intersection control evaluation study, as we've received the draft and when we've received the final, generally speaking, I don't bring that to the board for formal approval because we've had a presentation and it's time for comment on it. And so I signed at the City of Mankato Engineering Representative signs and then as well as the Maple, so the board is still fine with that process.
But since we're talking about two county roads intersection intersecting here, the major cost for this would be the counties, correct?
Yep. The city does have obviously that western side street that just goes to a dead end and carries little to no traffic. And that's one of the things that makes this an interesting dynamic as well because Stolzmann carries the predominant traffic volumes through compared to Stadium. Stolzmann carries almost twice as much traffic. So that's really where you see the offset and why the warrants aren't met as we go through the calculations. And then that western side street carries little to no traffic comparatively speaking.
Well, that's why I'd like to see, I mean, if we had an always stop, I mean, I've heard these arguments before, it says, oh, we're going to slow down traffic. Well, if if all it does is, you know, sometimes that's a good thing to slow down traffic. And if we can put up a four-way stop that has on Stolzmann Road has the flashing light so people see it, you probably won't have those rear end accidents like they're talking about. And, you know, and you're going to stop the accidents with the bicycles and the stuff because people are going to come to a stop before they take off.
The issue I have with doing one here where it doesn't meet the criteria is I got a whole list of people out in the rural area that want stop signs. And my, my way is saying, well, it doesn't meet the criteria. So we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere. And, you know, if it's, I guess I'm not sure how close to the criteria it is, but I will get many, many requests for stop signs if we just want to start putting them up.
Yep. Standards and precedents like this are, that's exactly the, I think, the struggle we have with it as a department too, is it somewhat opens Pandora's box of all around the county and then at times where you're going to have stop signs in every corner. So, yeah, we do want to look at all of these.
Well, number three certainly is good for me also. I mean, it's just that I don't know how many people will really slow down for those warning signs that we have across.
Yeah, you know, it'd be interesting to see specifically at the one that we put at just, just north of there for the elementary school crossing. And I forget his name, the city street name is James.
And I understand what you're saying. I absolutely agree with you.
I get a lot of requests for stop signs.
But, but I, you know, I'm looking at a cost factor as what will, what will stop the accident issue? I believe a stop sign would stop the accident issue. But if we're looking at criteria and stuff, if the number three comes across, that would be fine with me too.
I think the thing that preliminary part of the study really points out, if you read through the full study, is that the problem's not as big as the, as what it's been portrayed.
Portrayed as.
Portrayed as. Yes, thank you for that.
I looked at his example of that left car, you know, four minutes before he was fine and one minute after they left, we're fine. So there's a very small window of opportunity with, what was it, 60 cars? I remember it wasn't very many cars that go left at the peak times. To disrupt the traffic of the 666 cars that are going straight every day is probably more problematic than.
I actually take that road semi-frequently. And I think I could count on one hand the number of cars that I've seen taking a left-hand turn there. Now, if you're talking, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, you might have a couple, five o'clock. But I see zero, you know, zero or three and kind of.
Seventeen in the morning and sixty-five at the end of the day. And how, is that an hour?
That's over the peak hour.
I'll be interested in further studies because actually I didn't even mind the no build one, but.
That's me. That's a zero one.
I, I go that way a lot. I didn't know there.
I guess.
I mean, especially there's no traffic much.
An average of one accident in a year over a 10-year period isn't a big.
It's not a huge number. Compared to the state average. And again, with the addition of the pedestrian facility to the west, the R R F B does make a lot of sense.
I'm outraged at the two pedestrians that got run into the crashes. All right. Good discussion.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanksgiving, if I don't see.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you too. And congratulations again, Stephen.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for coming today.
All right, we'll move into human services.
I saw Kelly in the hall and I saw.
They've been here for a while.
Now, they have been here for a while.
Probably in the fireplace room working.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys doing?
We're doing well as a team. If we pool our resources, we're good.
Looks like you had a few action items here for us this morning and some discussional stuff.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do a handful of action items that I'll do right out of the gate here. Try to move through them fairly quickly. I know you've had a long, a long morning. And then I want to make sure to leave some time for Kelly to give a COVID update with a little more detail in that. Action items, financial assistance. We recently brought the consolidated fund grant to you and talked about that there's a settle up at the end because of COVID, this first item. We were not able to get our dollars out the door for what was usually utility shut offs, evictions, other types of emergencies. So we had $70,000 of underspending that we are shifting over to M R C I because they're the ones that serve our employment training folks. And, and so they believe they can get that money out the door, which is important to those individuals, those families. But we do have only until the end of the year, so it's a very tight timeline. So that's an adjustment item from, I think, last month when I brought them. Support of housing, partners for housing. We have a resource specialist that we're able to hire under that grant that we received a few months back. It is an employer of record agreement with partners. And the counties that are involved in this project are Rice, the sewer and ourselves. And this position will do the housing related tasks, the project development and the infrastructure development of this three-county project. This is all new for us, so we're trying to find our way through it. The amount of the overall grant was 167,980. And that was for the term of November 1st of this year through June 30th of '23. And then in public health, I have Kelly here with me, so if you want to drill down into these, we have an expert that can give you a different perspective than my own. But child and teen checkup, obviously one of our very core services, serving children ages birth through age 20 who are enrolled in medical assistance. We ensure they receive the needs for health and medical services. We are able to use phone outreach for this, our staff are. Some of the barriers that we address to improve access are what we call L E P, limited English proficiency, if that's a barrier, transportation, other things that we're able to resolve or work through. Twenty twenty-two is a little complex, so I hope this makes sense. The first half year is what we know and that will be similar to what it's been previously. So 2650 per child is how we get paid for those eligible for M A. The total for that first half is 89,371. And then the second half really is unknown. Health plans now have the option to start serving the same population. And so it is going to be hard for us to budget for the second half. And we just don't know how aggressive they'll be about serving, serving these folks. Up to maybe half of the individuals could get served, which would cut our revenues in half. And that would be for the second half of the year. The term of the overall contract, January 1st of '22 through December 31st of '22. Also in public health, Minnesota Department of Health, WIC. And I'm thinking the board is fairly familiar with another core service here through our WIC clinic, providing supplemental nutrition vouchers, breastfeeding supports, education, and also for nutrition to eligible children and their families so that they can stay healthy. The term of this is October 1st of '21 through September 30th of '22, which is the federal fiscal year. And then the amount of our WIC grant is 248,578, nine percent increase over a past year's funding. And due to the number of program participants is what drives that resource. And final item, children and family services. This is our mental health screening grant. This has been something we've administered for many years. It is split between human services and juvenile justice corrections department. And it is for kids who need a assessment, screening for mental health where they don't have it otherwise. So in children's mental health, we used to be able to use this grant, but now they're saying if you have other ways to get that done, then this is really for those families and individuals that have no other resource. And so it targets child protection, I'm sorry, and corrections. The grant this year is 36,132. And you'll see a split out in the narrative there. It is an increase of 97,60, a 37% increase. And that again is generated by the number of screenings that we do. So it's been a busy past cycle, probably no surprise to any of us. The term, January 1st of '22 through December 31st of '22. And those are the action items I have for today, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Do you have a motion to accept the action items?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I also will try to move through some of this metric information for you. The first slide, licensed family daycare. We see some pretty solid consistency, which I'm pleased with from my chair, just due to the COVID impacts. The newly licensed homes were at six, which is a fairly stable number as you see over the past several years. The same with the total number of daycare homes. I think somewhat stable. You'll see the high watermark there in 2017 where we had 119 daycare homes, now 89. So that, that is an important issue that I know a number of you Commissioners have asked about in both daycare as well as our next topic here, child foster care. Newly licensed homes, again, were fairly stable, which I'm pleased with given our circumstance. The high watermark there, 2018, 21 homes, and now we're at 15 newly licensed homes in this past cycle. I am pleased about the number of childcare homes overall. And you'll see that we're at 60, which is a good number. There is some churn though, so I would want to make sure I'm clear about this whenever you all ask. We're always out pounding the pavement saying we need more, more, more. Part of that is that relatives do step up when a family member is in need. And so, you know, even though that's critically important, it is a pretty contained picture as opposed to somebody who's saying, I want to be in the mission of foster care ongoing. That's a very different thing. So there is some representation by relative caregivers. And then the circle in the lower left, also 31 referrals for licensing. So I'm very pleased by that. There's churn in that. A lot of folks are interested. They'll get information, maybe not process all the way through, but that's a good number. And we're hopeful because you don't know how people are going to react to the current environment. And this seems like people are more than usual stepping up and saying, we're interested, we'll raise our hand. So very pleased by some of that information. Mr. Chair, I'll just keep rolling through this next slide. These are state-generated pictures of how our childcare assistance program goes throughout the year. You'll see 2021. All we can do is make copies of this off the system so we're not able to manipulate most of this information. On the first slide, you'll see at the bottom, the direct service allocation of 1,102,272. And then our projection, the third line down, 965,66. So we're actually short of our full allocation. Really hard to comment on this, given this year, I mean, just what was happening. And I will say in any given year, to predict how many families are in each, you know, childcare assistance is really not an exact science. And so we get an allocation based on our past performance again. We manage it to the best of our ability. I think last year we were over slightly. This year we look like we will be under to some degree, but not an atrocious amount. That might affect next year, which is always the concern then. It goes down and we have a high need next year, that'll, that'll be a hard circumstance. The second page is actually a lot more of the same. There's a column kind of the right of the middle, average monthly cost per child. So it just breaks down the monthly cost per family, which was on the previous slide. And then if I can move back up into that box at the top, you'll see that there's an administrative portion that we get and that's to pay for staff that does this work, $55,000. And there's also second to the bottom line, direct service match that comes from us, the county, and that gets distributed every month that we provide this service. So those are two embedded pieces that aren't in the first slide and that's why we included this. That's the overall picture. Pretty stable, which I'll take, given again, our environment with COVID. And hopefully we'll, we'll be able to serve the needs of our community going forward into this next year as well. That's what I have.
Questions?
Maybe not a question, but a comment going back to daycare. I mean, losing 30 daycares in four years, that's seven or eight a year. That's not a trend that's going to be very sustainable. And that's something we hear about. No matter where you are in the county or quite frankly, maybe in the state, it's a need that daycare availability and affordability, but availability more than anything else is something that has a lot of effects.
Very hot topic, Commissioner, and we know that the vulnerability we have in that number even going lower would really cause a lot of families not to be able to do their jobs and other things. So it's a serious concern. There's no doubt, doubt about that. And to layer up that just one more step is that what we hear about a lot this year And to layer up that just one more step, is that what we hear about a lot this year is that daycare is having to close, because if they do have incidents of COVID, there's kind of an immediate, non-negotiable response to that, which is shut you down. So from a business perspective, even if you open your home up, which is what these situations are here, not corporate, but this is somebody saying, I'll open my home, get licensed in my home to provide childcare. It's a tough mission to begin with, so appreciate the comments.
Mr. Chair, I know a couple of years ago, they did a study, and we were about a thousand beds short in, or slots shut, short in Blue Earth County. I'm assuming we're still in that arena somehow?
Yes, and you know, how you represent our community, obviously, is there's this good story that we're growing, and there's a lot of communities that aren't, that's great. But it does pressurize these comments that you both have about this issue. I think that number is probably worse. Hard to measure maybe right now with all the churn that is going on, with people being home because of COVID, and kids in the schools. But yes, it's a serious concern, and I would guess with our growth, that need will be even more pronounced, as you both are saying.
And just one other comment, when I look at us being shorter or spending less than we did last year, you know, there's some additional dollars going
Yes.
to families to help with childcare, so I don't know if this is a true apples-to-apples.
I would totally agree, even though I don't have any science behind that, my gut-level response would be that that's in fact what's happened. I do think when we look at that seventy thousand that we're pushing towards MRCI, that's the money that there were other sources that families could get for emergency assistance type things. It all goes to the bottom line. We know how our family budgets go, is if you get help here, it does help, it depends on who you pay and what your bills are. And so I think there's just been more, you know, one-time money and soft money out there that has changed that for the time being. I am a little nervous about then how the formula and math works next, next round.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Other questions for Phil? All right, we'll hear from Kelly for a minute.
So I'm looking forward to the day when I come here, and I say there's not much news to tell you. Nothing's happening, it's slowing down.
Boring.
Yeah, it's boring, unfortunately.
How about Mission Academy?
Mission Academy, right. We're not quite there yet, so there are quite a few updates that I have today. I actually updated my notes, because our updates come out at eleven from the Department of Health, so the statistics I wrote on my notes yes, last night, are now updated, so.
If you would have been here at eleven, like you were supposed to be.
I wouldn't have the new numbers.
Whole news.
So as of today, we have four thousand, or forty thousand five hundred and twenty-one residents with at least one dose. Yesterday, we had forty thousand two hundred and fifty-nine, so an increase of two hundred and sixty-two people in one day that received a vaccine dose. Our five to eleven-year-olds went from thirteen percent yesterday to seventeen percent today.
Can I go back to dose? Does that include the booster?
That does not include the booster.
Okay.
So that's, they have one dose, and then there's different statistics for a completed series, and then they're also tracking booster doses as well. So some updates also from Friday, from the coalition meeting that we attend. So statewide hospitalizations on Friday of COVID-positive people grew to one thousand two hundred and forty-five people, up two hundred and sixty-three from the week before. Those numbers included two hundred and ninety-six ICU and nine hundred and forty-nine in what's called a med-surge bed. Emergency rooms continue to have difficulty placing patients across the state and across the region. Actually, with two hundred people currently boarding in ERs waiting for a bed, some of the help that's coming from the federal level is, hopefully, will alleviate some of that, just being backed up in our healthcare system. Capacity to provide the monoclonal therapies, which are administered via IV, is tight. There's enough supply, it's the staffing that continues to be a challenge with that. So a little bit more on state-level statistics, our twelve-plus age group at the state level is vaccinated sixty-six point seven, regionally, we're sixty-four point seven, and at a county level, we are sixty-eight point four. So we're above the state average a little bit right now. When we include the five to eleven-year-old group, we are at sixty-three point eight, so that does drop it, but of course, they are still in the process of getting vaccinated.
I have a question. Do you see vaccinations in the schools coming to pass or not? To me, that makes so much sense.
Yep, there are efforts in some of our schools actually to be vaccinated. I know the Department of Health has come down, one of the pharmacies is currently vaccinating yesterday and today, so those numbers that I just read you will, I think, go up by a few hundred within the next.
But they're not doing it during, in the school, during class time?
Not during class time, parents need to be with the child, so sometimes during.
Like at four o'clock or something?
So there's been times where it's been like two or three o'clock to four, five, six, correlating with conferences or other school-type events.
I just remember getting shots when I was in school.
I do too. So moving on to some statistics through the breakthrough cases, which really paint a picture of how effective the vaccine is in preventing those serious illness and hospitalizations. So eighty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three, or two point five percent of fully vaccinated residents have had a breakthrough case. Of those fully vaccinated, only point one 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 percent have been hospitalized, so three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight. And of those fully vaccinated, only point zero one nine, or six hundred and twenty people have died with COVID listed as their death. So that really, those statistics really show that the vaccine prevents that severe disease. Additional data is showing that the boosters also are boosting the immunity, preventing that serious disease, so increasing your tolerance to severe disease. As you heard last week, it was announced that Minnesotans eighteen and older who finished their primary series of Pfizer or Moderna, which was a two-shot series, or Janssen, which was a one-shot, or sorry, just the folks with Pfizer and Moderna for at least six months ago, will be recommended to get their COVID-19 boosters. So that's already happening as well. Anyone who received Janssen, and it's two months after their initial, and that's a one-series vaccine, are eligible for a booster. You can, with Pfizer and Moderna, cross, use the other one for a booster, depending on that supply and or desire.
Excuse me, but not Janssen.
Or sorry, Moderna and Pfizer, the two mRNA vaccines, you can, if you had Moderna, you can have a Pfizer booster, if you had Pfizer, you can have Moderna booster. Janssen, you cannot.
You can.
That's what I heard you say, I just wanted to clarify for my.
Okay.
Cross pollinate.
Yeah. Okay, I know a little about bees, okay.
So we've also been working with our community partners on community vaccination opportunities, so we have a weekly meeting with Open Door, Well Share, Capol, Minnesota Council of Churches, and other folks who are either vaccinators or are community connectors, seeing some just amazing partnerships and amazing things happening with vaccinations. Examples of the work include the vaccinations that are happening weekly at Capol, and then there was, so it's a community connector for the Latinx community. And then vaccinations at an event this Sunday hosted by Condyle Kel, which serves the southern Sudanese population, so that's super exciting. And then as a region, again, we live in such an amazing community. Times where some of our county partners or some of our vaccinating partners may not have enough vaccine to cover an event, if the state said, we just can't fill your order to that level, we've been able to cover all of those needs as a region, so.
Nice.
Super exciting that that continues. Blue Earth Taxi continues to provide transportation for ambulatory and wheelchair folks who are confirmed to have COVID, are showing signs and symptoms, or have other COVID-like illness or need testing. Some of that transportation for our residents is just incredible, incredibly critical. Things like getting two cancer appointments or dialysis appointments, they still need to do that, even if they're COVID. So that has been, again, another wonderful provider in our community stepping up. We continue in our vaccination efforts as well. We've moved from hosting weekly to hosting about every three weeks. On Thursdays, we go to MSU, then we go to the jail, and then we do homebound folks, so we do that all in one day. And as of today, we vaccinated three hundred and eighty individuals, so that's exciting. Yep, and we continue to have folks on the MSU campus engage us, those are still worth, you know, definitely an efficient way to provide vaccine. Partnering with the jail is to really hit some of our folks that are very high-risk, and our homebound individuals don't leave home for any other services, so again, folks that wouldn't be able to get the vaccination other ways. We can continue to receive essential service requests, although a slight decrease noted, so there's some good news today. But the complexity goes up a little, a number of our folks have needed isolation, and they struggle with housing insecurity, so we're working with the shelters to provide that in some of our local hotels that continue to engage us. We were also able to move the state to a more efficient model, I'm getting a little in the weeds here, but some of our international students, and we know MSU has a very strong international student population, have received AstraZeneca as one of their vaccines, which is not recognized in the U.S. So we've been directed to put that in the IMTracker, the NIC record, the vaccination record at the state level, which then triggers the record to send us an email asking us if we made a mistake. So after a few rounds, we are no, we will no longer receive those emails if it's entered as a historical record, only if we say we provided it. So if we say we provided it, then it's probably a mistake. If it's entered as a historical record, it's accurate, so, you know, more efficient, looking towards a more efficient model. We continue to support the upload of that data into NIC or the Vaccine Registry. In our region, we're facing some challenges, so when, you don't have to show ID to be vaccinated, so we can't reconcile what someone's name is with the record. So if your name is Penelope, and you put Penny on your registration, it will not merge those records at the state level, because it does not know that Penelope and Penny are the same people. So it creates a whole new record. So we've had some challenges finding records for folks, we've been able to find all of them at this point, but other issues that kind of have happened because we aren't looking at IDs is somebody types their birthday in wrong and misses it by a year. So instead of nineteen sixty-eight, it's nineteen sixty-seven, which again, creates a new record. Or just, you know, some of those typos, as we're filling out things electronically, that get missed in the review, so. Just some of those in-the-weeds challenges that we're still working through. Yeah, our IMTracker, our Vaccine Registry, sent out sixteen thousand four hundred and nineteen letters, COVID-19 reminder letters, earlier this year, with five thousand five hundred and forty-five of those letters going to residents in Blue Earth County. Letters were sent to residents who'd received one dose or no doses of COVID-19 vaccine, encouraging them to start the series. We moved into using new technology on those letters, in addition to the printed information, we had QR codes, so people who use their phones to access information had a visual queue to do that. And then I can't possibly say enough good things about our local partners, the public health staff, what they do, we just have an amazing community as I, you know, write these out and then talk to you about these, it just, the local coordination is just continues to be amazing. And I wanted to end with promoting the Docket app that you can load onto your phone, I don't know if the board is familiar with that, but you can load it onto your phone, and it will pull your vaccine record onto your phone, so that you always have that available to you. So you can see when you had your COVID-19 vaccinations, or any other measles, tetanus, I don't know about you guys, but, you know, when did I get my last tetanus shot? So then you have to call your dog or call us, and get that now, I can see that right on my phone, so it's exciting. And it helps prepare you for your doctor's appointment, because you can see what's due or your children, so that you have a little information ahead of time, so.
Great idea.
If you need more information about that, we'll have that on our website later today.
I tried to, when I pulled it down for my, I got the opportunity to pull it down, the next time I tried to access it, it said, what's your password? I don't remember ever putting a password in, so now I can't access it.
Let's connect, and see if we can solve that.
Kevin?
Just back to the numbers, you talked about two point five percent breakout and the point one 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 percent, I can remember that one. That was statewide?
Yes, those are statewide numbers.
So statewide, we're at a two point five percent breakout of fully vaccinated?
Correct.
The point one 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 of fully vaccinated that are hospitalized.
Correct, and that information was most likely updated today at eleven, so if you go on the webpage that I pulled that from, those numbers are now going to look slightly different. I wouldn't imagine they are significantly different, but they can change a few percentage points.
What page are you getting that from?
From the Minnesota Department of Health.
The one we've all been watching anyways.
Yes.
All right, other questions for Kelly or Phil?
Well, it's very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy to meet each of you, for sure, and your families. Good to see you, thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, Bob, you're on.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is the county board minutes for November second.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second for the county board minutes, any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next are the bills for the three weeks in the Kedden.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second for the bills, any discussion or questions that haven't been answered already? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number ten in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda, just have informational items for the board today. We did have a resignation of an on-call library clerk, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. We also had a resignation of our community health coordinator, and have initiated recruitment to fill that position. And then we had a number of resignations in our dispatch area, we had a sergeant in dispatch, as well as two nine-one-one operators, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill both of the nine-one-one dispatchers, and are holding off just a little bit on the sergeant, but will plan to do so at a later date.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I mean.
Do we have five dispatchers?
Five.
Yeah, how many do we have, dispatchers?
I believe close to twenty total.
We do have that many, okay. I suppose twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, twenty-four-seven.
Yep.
Lot of bodies.
Yep.
Then we had a resignation of a senior account clerk in our Human Services Department. And then on the plus side, we've actually added some positions, so we've filled a part-time library clerk, as well as two correctional officers in the jail. Happy to answer any other questions the board has about the Human Resources activity.
Any questions?
I have one question. We have a resignation of a part-on-call library clerk, and then one that we just hired part-time. Could that be made into a full-time position or not?
You know, there, it's the scheduling that causes us to have a desire to have those part-time roles, and the on-call is especially important, where they don't work kind of a set schedule, so that flexibility is really helpful to the library.
And I get that, I just think it seems like we're having resignations and then filling, and we've got a gap all the time.
Josh maybe can speak more to this, but I know he's had conversations with the library director about potential full-time positions and how to manage that, and how we continue to see recommendations from the department that these part-time positions are important to the operations.
Okay, other questions on the Human Resources?
All right, item number eleven in your packet then is a resolution relative to the Greater Blue Earth River Basin lines, or GABRBA as it's often referred to, the joint powers agreement that oversees some activity in the Blue Earth River Basin. As part of the one watershed, one planning activities, GABRBA has applied for some grant funding, potentially could be some funding that would come back to the county for some work that our staff do, and so this resolution would allow the county, if we have any expenses that could be applied against the grant, to recover those expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the grant agreement, any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, motion carries.
Item number twelve in the packet is a resolution regarding the sale of the Shabbat Street House. The board will recall that as part of a state, this house was donated to the county. The county has decided to sell this property and utilize those funds as part of the directive of the estate that it be utilized for the purpose of the library. This resolution would basically delegate the authority to the county administrator to complete to complete sale documents and purchase agreement documents as a part of this sales process. We first had to go out for bids. We did not receive formal bids during the timeframe. Now we can accept any offer that comes forward. We have had a number of offers come forward, some with contingency, some without. So there is interest in the property and so to expedite some of the work in the sale, staff are requesting that that authority be delegated.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the resolution for the House. Any discussion?
I told the airport commission about it this morning. Told him somebody should buy it.
Maybe somebody on the commission will.
That's what I told him.
All right.
Got quite a history.
Got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 13 in the packet is the financial status report through the end of October. Given the time here today, I'll make this report a little short. Our total revenue is sitting at about $97.3 million against expenses of $92.6. We still are waiting some of the additional local property tax levy distribution after the November collection. So we'll see our revenue increase even more in the next report. Dropping down to the expenditures line, just draw your attention to the contracts and fees line. You'll see that at $31.8 million this year compared to $22 million last year. That is our public works activity. You've heard the county engineer say that this was one of the busiest construction years that he's seen and it's certainly reflected in these numbers. So overall though, we continue to sit in a solid financial position. The enterprise fund, again, as we've talked in prior months, without those large expenditures, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures there. The second page includes our cash balances, sitting at a total county funds of $123 million at this point with some other funds that have been collected as part of the tax collection but not distributed. So those funds will be moved here in November. Be happy to answer any questions though that the board has on the financial report.
Any questions? Okay.
Item number 14 then is the list of third quarter donations for acceptance by the board. Again, the library is the recipient of a number of different financial donations that are listed there. The sheriff also received some funding for some squad tires. So that's a nice donation there. And then human services also received some smaller, well-appreciated donations for mental health purposes. We also received some in-kind donations that are listed on the second page as well as volunteer time on the third page.
On with acceptance, the list?
Okay, go, a second for the donations?
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, Bob, it looks like that's the list on my page except for our committee reports. Do you have anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We will go into committee reports and Clean, I think I'll start from you.
Okay. On the second, we had the road tour, which we all attended. Great fun. On the third, we had Minnesota Transportation Alliance Legislative Meeting. Since there's still a lot of consternation in Congress, the concern is that there will be a CR, which we don't want funding to stop, but the CR, depending on how long it is, could be up to, it could be a year CR, which would delay the infrastructure bill a year. So there could, you know, everybody's excited about the infrastructure bill, but if we have a CR, it could be delayed. On the eighth, I had finance and governmental affairs with NACO. A lot of discussion about the infrastructure bill, but there's also Senate File 3011 and House File 5735 that is asking for increased flexibility using ARPA funds for allowing us to use it for a local match. It, you know, it's, it's been put into a bill, but nothing's happened yet, but it's something that we really want to watch. On the ninth, we had a work session. Then I went to the United Way kickoff. And at that point, we were at 80% of our allocation last year, which was great. I don't know how much it's increased. And I was out of town for the, what's the sweeping one? Can't remember the name of it.
Curling.
Curling and the hot dish. So I don't know how, if they got additional dollars that way. They did a pre-United Way kickoff to try to, and that's where they got the 80%. On the ninth, I talked about that. And that evening, Mark and I were at the GMG Business Awards. They were really nice and it was a packed house, which was great. On the fifteenth, I had a diversity council meeting. Mohammed Al-Siddiq is the new executive director there. He's already started, so, and there's going to be some work with Mankato Area Foundation and the Diversity Council as to strategic planning, which I think it's a really good thing. On the seventeenth, I had Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership in Round Lake, Minnesota. And we had a lot of discussion about foreclosures. And the fear is that foreclosures and people getting kicked out of their apartment, for lack of a better term, and that it probably could start impacting us in December and January. And so how are we going to manage that? It falls into our human services and it falls into housing across the board. On the eighteenth, I, on this Germany and Minnesota, University of Minnesota, on renewable energy, and they were talking about dams in the infrastructure bill. And the university's actually done some, some research on dams and how you can maybe fund a portion of it. So I'm trying up with them and we'll see what happens. On the nineteenth, Vance and I had RAC. The undersecretary of rural development spoke to us. She talked about broadband, energy, jobs in the market, water, housing, technical assistance. And they plan on prioritizing applications that come from local government and co-labs. So that's a good thing. This morning, I had the airport commission. At this point, they have 33 aircraft out there from flight school, 70 flight instructors, and they're doing about 180 to 220 hours a day flying. The tower has been sent, the proposal to give us a tower, has been sent to the powers that be and we'll just kind of wait and see what happens. We figure even if they approve it, it'll take a good year to even get those approvals. So that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Clean. Vance?
All right, well, I'll start out with our road tour on November 2nd. And then myself and Clean went up to St. Cloud for the Transportation Alliance that afternoon. And then, of course, we had our Transportation Alliance meeting on the third. On the fourth, I had a cell central towards zero death meeting on Zoom. On the eighth, I had a regional detox meeting on Zoom. On the ninth, we had our work session. And then I had a call-in for the NACO Transportation Committee. On the tenth, I attended a recharge Minnesota recognition Zoom, which is kind of interesting to see what's going on across the state of Minnesota for charging stations and stuff. I also had a community corrections meeting and I had a Blue Earth Nickland County towards zero death the same day. Full day that day. November 11th, Veterans Day ceremony. So I met along, a lot of commissioners went to different ceremonies across. And on the sixteenth, I had the NACO Central Region Zoom. I spoke with Emily Murray from AMC about transportation on the policy committees. On the seventeenth, I had the AMC Policy Coordinating Committee. And I left each of you the platforms that we were bringing up for our policy committees for your fine reading experience. The eighteenth, I had TDS Board and Transportation Alliance Ledge meeting. And it was also mentioned on the nineteenth, myself and Clean had their RAC Rural Action Caucus Zoom. And that's the end of mine, sir.
All right, thank you, Vance. Kevin?
Road tour, work session, already been mentioned. Department heads, Mr. Chair, I'll leave SWCD an extension for you. Waterwise meetings on JD 36, CD 86 and 52, as well as a meeting I held with the Crystal Loon Lake Association. Had a drainage work group meeting on the eighteenth. And then public hearing for Vernon Center Road Project on the eighth and then follow-up with that. Yesterday, we had a Rural Minnesota Energy Board meeting. We attended that. And then the afternoon, NACO's Ag and Rural Policy Committee met where we heard from the undersecretary of rural development. Tomorrow, the AMC Natural Resources Environment Committee will do our policy platform discussion. That ends my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mark?
Okay, after the road tour on the second, did have November 3rd, the department head meeting. It was kind of short, but then on November 4th, did have MAPLE, our policy board meeting. The big things that come up was that North Mankato is looking at that bridge across 14. We looked at various designs and they're trying to couple with kids going to school and segregating it from traffic and so, yeah. You've seen that in the paper.
I'm just trying to figure out where exactly they want the bridge to go.
It's closer to...
The high, the junior high?
Yeah. I'm trying to think.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know, the people, they say that it's, it'll work, but I don't know. I don't know if kids will just, like I would, I'd just walk in. But anyway, we'll see. Yeah, it's closer to by the Dakota Meadows there. Is where it's going. Then on the ninth, yeah, we, yeah, well, we had the work session. And then on the, that evening, we had GMG and Clean and I were there. And yeah, there was a good crowd. And that was actually, yeah, the first one since the COVID. Then on the 10th, did have a Rita meeting. That was a, Bob, that was, that was actually in North Mankato. And then on, we had a MICA virtual meeting with Mike on MICA that I caught. And then Saturday, I didn't really catch everybody on that, but I did make the SIPs for shelter for the, our partners for housing. That was event at the Circle Inn in North Mankato, but I just dropped in. There's people that want to drink a little bit more or take a lot of samples. But it was a good fundraiser. Then did have partners for housing or kind of our annual meeting here with Partners for Housing, and that was on the eighteenth. Oh, I forgot, yeah, I was at the, our curling game. I don't know, I supposedly was the honorary chair because I was here the longest, but anyway, that was, that was fun.
I forgot I was, I was there also.
Yeah, you were there.
But I think Kip showed up also.
Yes, he was there too. It's a gallant effort by our Blue Earth County team members there, including Josh. So anyway, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mark. The few things that haven't been mentioned, I was out dealing with some planning and zoning, conditional use permits we got coming up next month. And I had our MVAC meeting. Everything's going really well there. We're restructuring our committee assignments a little bit, so that was a little bit of a nuance to us. We've been kind of the same for a while. We're mixing two of them just to make things more efficient and try to get things done a little faster and have better turnout. Had our EMS meeting. Everything's going really well there. They're just wrapping up the last of the projects they have for the summer, a lot of towards zero death stuff. Mark was a lot of that. And getting ready for the winter stuff. Extension and SWCD, both were reports from all of the different activities going on in those, but I do want to mention that I did bring up the dam at both those meetings. SWCD was just before we met as the work session, but there was some interest in that, what's going on with that. But more interestingly, and I brought it up at the extension meeting after they all gave their reports, there was only about five or six of us, seven in the room, but very good discussion about what are you going to do, remove it, you know, whatever you want to do, but the $80 million price tag, people have already seen it because the paper had been out and, but they understand that it doesn't make sense to keep pouring money into this. Consensus of that group at that time was, you know, you should look really seriously taking it out, you know? A lot of questions about how much power does it generate if we do keep it going? And so just, just really good discussion. So I think when we start having these open houses about this, it's going to be, we'll get a lot of needed information, so.
And I don't take a lot of facts in the free presses thing, but the free press put out a thing asking if people would like it removed every place. And the majority of over 60% said they, they figured it should be removed.
Was a non-scientific.
Non-scientific.
That is a non-scientific.
It's always, it's non-scientific.
I think, I think we'll have some good discussion.
We had a discussion on this at the airport commission this morning.
Do they want to buy it? Do they want to go out there?
They thought we should just let it go.
And you'd be surprised how many people, that question comes up almost anytime you talk about it. Well, what's going to happen if you just let it fall over? Well, you know, it's such catastrophic and life, could be life-threatening situation. So, and it depends on how it falls over. There's so many different variables.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people tell me, "Just leave it."
Just let it fall over, yeah.
You don't understand, but that's okay.
Well, we will all learn a lot between now and what we make our decision, but it'll be a good time. So with that, if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to recess for lunch.
So moved. Second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for your time. All right.